And welcome one and all to the Pembroke Pines City Commission Meeting of August 6, 2025. This is our first meeting back after the July break, and I hope all of you are having a great summer. It sure is cool out there, right? It's wonderful South Florida weather, and we're really, really enjoying it, and we hope that you are as well, and that you and your family are all well. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Good.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hernandez.
President.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
President.
Mayor Castillo.
Here.
City Manager Dodge.
Here.
City Attorney Goran.
I'm here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. To honor America, Ava Merkandetti, who is a 7th grade student at Pembroke Pines Charter West Middle School, will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the National Anthem. And for both, I would ask you to please stand and remain standing. Thank you. Ava, whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight Or the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare The bombs bursting in air Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
Wow! Ava Merkandetti, thank you so very much. That was beautiful. Folks, America is in great hands, and we are so proud of you, Ava. Thank you so very, very much.
Thank you.
Okay, presentations, items to be pulled from the agenda? Any items?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Items on presentation, first, I'd like to welcome up our state representative, Robin Bartman, who wants to give us a legislative update. Representative Bartman, thank you for everything that you do for us in Tallahassee. I know that you've been very, very busy up there, and the floor is yours, Mayor.
I am so happy to be here. I love Pembroke Pines. I want to start off by thanking the mayor and this commission for everything you do, because you are truly amazing, and you really serve the community, and all of the events and everything you do make a difference. I also want to acknowledge Charlie Dodge and Sam Goran. What you don't know is that when I have committee meetings, and when I need information right away, I can call them at 7:00 in the morning, 9:00 o'clock at night, and say, how is this going to impact Pines? What's going to happen to your city? What will it do? And they are always, always available for me, no matter what, to make sure that when I make a decision, I understand what it's going to do to the people back home. So I just want to thank them, and I want to give you guys a hand for everything you do. I also want to thank the City of Pembroke Pines for joining the fight against the incinerator in Airport West. We worked very hard, working with an environmental attorney. Work is not over. I have an ally in Meg, Representative Meg Warrenberger, who is amazing, and so we're going to work on all of that more next year to do some other things. I want to go over the legislative update really quick. I'll be quick. I know we have some really amazing presentations. So this session, we have approximately $116 billion budget. So you'll see, and everyone, if you haven't signed up for my newsletter, go to robin.bartman@myfloridahouse.gov, and we will add you during session. I give you a weekly update of everything going on in Tallahassee, every bill, and that also happens in committee weeks. For me, this session, though, I'm proud to say that three of the bills I sponsored crossed the finish line and were actually signed into the law by the governor, which I'm very proud of. So that's 15 bills in the five years I've been here, so I'm very proud of that record, and all of my bills are to make a difference for people. The first bill was House Bill 519, which was Administration of Controlled Substances. I have a very positive relationship with the Florida Fire Chiefs Association of the State of Florida, and that's why your fire trucks now have blue lights. And I ran another bill this year in regards to aligning state law with federal law, with narcotics disbursement on the first responder vehicles. So it was a glitch bill, but it needed to be done, and I was very happy to run that for them and get that across the finish line. The second bill I ran, you know, as a special ed teacher and assistant principal, so that's where my heart is. I ran an education bill once again, House Bill 877. That has to do with school readiness. I know I have shared this story with a lot of people, but when you have a child with a disability, especially autism, and they're going to a preschool, a private preschool, teachers are not equipped with the skills to deal with them in some cases. And as a matter of fact, the expulsion rate for pre-K children with disabilities is three times that of K through 12 combined. So you can imagine that the most important years of these children's lives are disrupted because they're bouncing school to school, and they have no consistency. So this is my second year with Senator Alexis Cataloot, and we got it across the finish line. And so this bill is for those children, that if you're taking Early Learning Coalition dollars from the state, and you're taking that weighted FTE for those students, that your teachers now have to be trained. It also provides after-care programming dollars for those students with disabilities. This community knows if you have a child with a disability, the hardest thing to do is to find pre-K, to make sure they're in the right school, to make sure that you can have an after-school program that'll meet their needs. So that's what this bill was really about, and it's going to be a game changer for those parents, so I was very proud of that. And then, once again, for the police officers in our state, I ran House Bill 751 with the Fraternal Order of Police. I worked with them on this bill. So Officer Lahoda, he was directing traffic, just like many of your officers do, at a graduation, and he was struck and suffered a catastrophic injury. But the state statute was very unclear, because when you're injured in the line of duty with a catastrophic injury, you should be allowed to have your health insurance paid for the duration, and your family's health insurance paid for the duration. But because the way the language was written in statute, it was unclear that, and his family was not going to receive that coverage, even though his life is altered forever, and his family's lives are altered forever. So we were able to change that bill to make sure that every first responder, I ran the police bill, we had someone else run for the fire department, that in any line of duty, if you're putting your life on the line, whether you're directing traffic, whether you're driving down the road, or you're in a high-speed pursuit, or have to draw your weapon, that you and your family are going to be protected, that you have our backs every single day, and the State of Florida is going to have your backs. So I just want to thank firefighters and the police in the room for everything you all do to keep us safe. So those were my three bills. I want to go over some highlights, because I know everyone in Pines, we all like boating here in Pines. Many of you have boats. You need to know, we passed Lucy's Law, which is a really important law, because it changes the laws on the water, including DUIs. It treats DUIs like motor vehicle DUI. There are classes that have to be taken. For the time purposes, I'm going to go through quickly, but that's a great law, and it's going to make a difference. I want to talk about House Bill 913, because the people on this dais spent many hours with me at Century Village. I know both Commissioner Hernandez, Castillo, I think all of you, Good, Rodriguez, you are, Commissioner Rodriguez, you are all there with us. So we knew that the condo bill was a problem, and we know that in Century Village, that when they have to raise their rates because of the condo bill, because of the reserves, they don't have the ability to get $20 more a month, $100 more a month, $200 more a month. We know Sophie is like 100 years old. She can't go out and get a second job, because she's not working at 100. So what we did is we put all the condos together, we organized across Pembroke Pines, and we created the One Voice Coalition, and Wendell NC hosted that every month. And finally, we got a plan together, and we actually had Vicky Lopez, who runs all the condo bills, who's from Miami, and a dear friend of mine, come to the meeting, and we actually were able to put language in the bill that came right out of those meetings, that says, for your reserves, you can use a line of credit, which will help for those condominiums, so they don't have to have that cash on hand. You know that if you have the line of credit that can be utilized, that will help with your condo dues. And it was really exciting, and I sent it to all of the condo presidents that were there. She actually announced on the floor when she was presenting the bill, and she was like, and for Representative Bartman and Century Village in Pembroke Pines, this language is for you. So we were able to really make a difference for every condo owner in the State of Florida by being part of that conversation, and making sure that that language was changed, so we're very excited about that. I want to go over a couple new criminal penalties. We have a new law for dangerous and excessive speeding. You need to know now, because I know we have speeders in every city in Florida, that if you go 50 miles over the speed limit, or up to 100 miles over the speed limit, you face jail time now. If you get arrested for excessive, you can have up to six months in jail. And I know it's really, like, especially the younger kids do this, when they first get their cars, they need to know that it's not going to be just a ticket, it's going to be a criminal penalty, and you face losing your freedom. So I wanted to make sure that the parents and everyone heard that, to let them know that. Also, for kids, things that are very important to me have to do with sexual images, and the transfer of sexual images, and blackmailing, and all of that. We've increased all of those penalties, which is really important. And I'm going to be quick, so we don't have to go through all of this. I'll go over my appropriations. So I'm very happy to say that almost all of my appropriations made it through the process, and the ones that were signed with the governor that crossed the finish line directly impacts Pembroke Pines. I have seen each and every one of you at Children's Harbor, which is our group home here in Pembroke Pines, where we serve the most vulnerable and neediest children in the county. These are children that have no place to go, and so I'm happy to say that I was able to bring home money, so that they can get new roofs on their buildings, so that they can stay open, so we were very excited about that. Also, if you drive Dyke's Road, there will be a new turn lane now, because we were able to secure funding for a turn lane. I know that that's a really big deal here, and not impacting your city as much, but Southwest Ranches, if you ever drive down Griffin, you'll see that their fire station is actually portable, and their million-dollar trucks are underneath tarps. We did get money to help build their new fire station. So we had a really successful year this year, so I'm very proud of everything we've done. In terms of sales tax, if you have not gone out yet, you need to shop for all of your school supplies now. August 1st through August 31st, you're going to have a whole month of the school supply sales tax exemptions. And this is really important, because we're all kind of trained, we know, oh wait, this is our hurricane preparedness week. So we are no longer going to have a hurricane preparedness week. We have a permanent sales tax exemption year-round for things like batteries, tarps, gas cans, ground anchors, generators, smoke and carbon monoxide detectors, outdoor and safety items. So we're going to have year-round. So don't wait for that week. Know that we're giving you that sales tax exemption now. And then, the one sales tax holiday that you are going to see is outdoor gear and sales tax. Some people call it the hunting and fishing sales tax exemption for camping gears, and that's from September 8th to December 31st. I will be posting that on my social media. If you've not done so, August 4th, the money became available for my Safe Florida Home. I know a lot of people have already responded. You go in, you apply for an inspection, and you can get up to $10,000 for a grant for your roof or your windows. Do not sign a contract until you are approved to do that. The biggest mistake people have is they have a contract for a roof already, and then they go and they apply. You have to do it in the correct order. So you know you can call my office, we'll walk you through the whole process. We've already opened that up. We've had very successful flow events, getting people their driver's licenses, which has been very, very exciting, and we're going to have an amazing flow event for the first time, where we have a ton of people in Century Village who need just Florida IDs, so they can go to the doctor. And so we have created a flow event where they're coming here, and the Century Village trolleys are actually going to bring them here. So for the first time, those people who can't get out, who can't get those appointments, who can't get anywhere are going to have access to get their driver's license. So we've been, like, working really hard to try to make sure that we're taking care of the people in District 103. I want to thank the business chamber who's here today. I see Patty Archer, and the president, and everyone here. So five years ago, when I first ran, they came, one of their legislative eggs and issues, and they were talking about the business rental tax. And so I co-sponsored a bill that first year, and we actually decreased the business rental tax. And then this year now, we have a permanent sales tax exemption for business rental tax. So I want to just thank the chamber for having that hindsight five years ago. I want to apologize to the city, because you will no longer be collecting those taxes. And I want to talk to you really quick about something very important. So we're going to be putting on town hall meetings across the district shortly about property taxes. So as you know, there was a lot that went on this session in regards to property taxes. The Speaker wanted to decrease sales tax. The Senate President was kind of in the middle, and the governor wanted to eliminate property taxes, period, and then he amended that to $1,000, you get $1,000 off. What people have to understand, and your city has already produced most of this documentation, is what your property taxes go for. The men and women in the back, your fire, your police, your roads, your garbage, all of that is your property taxes. And so they're going to be tough decisions to be made, because it would basically eliminate your budget. Not just the budget of a municipality, but the budget of any special district, like mosquito control, like water management districts. That's going to be huge for Florida, because what are you replacing that revenue with? I mean, there's going to talk about, well, we'd increase sales tax by 12%. Well, if we have a downturn in the economy, who's going to be able to go out and do anything with a 12% sales tax? So it's very scary, because if we don't do it right, or if it goes on the ballot, especially if it goes on the ballot in two years, you can undo it for another two years. So whatever we put on that ballot, or whatever we come up with, it has to be well thought out. I don't think it's just property taxes that are hurting people, it's their insurance. And once again, we have not seen that relief for people in terms of their homeowner's insurance, which is the biggest deal. But the property taxes are a big deal, and people will say, well, I own my house, why do I have to pay property taxes? And I would say, do you want the police to come to your house? Do you want the fire department to come to your house if it's on fire? Because it's kind of like a responsibility. So we need to figure out the sweet spot, where we can create something that meets the needs of everyone, but doesn't dissolve our municipalities, and take away your ability to govern as you see fit, and how you need to spend your money for your residents. So I need everyone to stay engaged in that. I need the public to stay engaged. I know Chapel Trail is here. I have been working on the trees. I met with the Arborist Association this week. The trees have been like the bane of my existence, but we're going to get the tree thing going as soon as we can, where it doesn't hurt everyone, because we have a situation with trees in homeowner-owned communities that are lifting sidewalks that create a huge liability. So we're working on some language that would protect everybody. So it is an absolute pleasure to work with the city commission, to work with this mayor, to work with this city. I also want to introduce my two new aides. This is Darian, come on up. Se habla español perfecto. Nosotros practicamos todo el tiempo, pero ella es perfecta en español. Es colombiana. And Alyssa, who's my new legislative aide. And then, as you know, we always have our interns, and I have Ben Anderson here, who's one of our interns. And he actually went to Tallahassee and served on the House floor as my page this session. And from one of the charter schools here in Pines, we had Marilyn, who actually served as the messenger. So for any parents out there watching, if you want your child to get involved, please get involved. Call my office. My cellphone for everyone out there is 954-668-3662. And thank you for letting me serve you. I love serving this community. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, Representative Bartman, and I just want to tell you, you're very hardworking, and you get a lot of things done, and the City of Pembroke Pines appreciates you. You know, I have a lot of respect for the governor. The governor is a very capable man. He's in his second term. And when he came out with the property tax issue, I wasn't exactly sure where it was going, because it was introduced without the alternative. So all he was talking about was part of, and I kept asking, so where would these many millions of dollars, hundreds of billions of dollars, that go to cities, counties, and other governmental organizations, where would that money go? And I didn't have an answer. And then somebody said, well, we're thinking about raising the sales tax. So I started looking, I said, well, how much would you raise it by? And they said, well, somewhere between 12 and 15%. So I started looking at which states in the United States have the highest property tax, and what I found was Louisiana. Now, if I've forgotten that, I apologize to Louisiana, but I think it's you, at 9% and change. Now, if we were at 12 or 15% on the property tax, on the sales tax, not only would seniors pay more, because we spend more of our dollars buying goods and services in the private sector than we do paying property tax, but it would affect tourism, which is our number one industry here in Florida. And I'm not sure that, at the end of the day, the swap would make sense. But then he said one other thing, and I have to caution you, I have great respect for this governor. But he said that there were just too many Floridians that felt that because they were paying property tax, they were actually renting their homes from the government, even though they had paid for their homes, let's say, or even if they had a mortgage, that this would be like a second mortgage, because they're renting it from the government. Now, I don't know about you, and I encourage each of you to take a look at this, because every situation is slightly different. I can appreciate that. But at my home, I pay twice what I pay in property tax to the insurance company, to insure my home, which I own, okay? So this Floridian feels he's renting his house from the insurance company. So I think, I think one of the things that we can do, and I think this Doge stuff is terrific. I mean, one fella asked me on Nextdoor, Mike, he asked me, he says, so what are you going to do if people, if the Doge people come to visit Pembroke Pines? And I said, we'll leave the light on. And that wasn't to be flipped. We have nothing to hide. This is a city that, for the 10th year in a row, this, tonight, I believe, we're going to start the process, will have cut or kept the mileage rate in this city exactly the same. I don't know many other cities that can do that. This is a city that has been operating on a fiscally conservative basis for a very, very long time. And we're very, very careful about how we spend people's money. But we're not cheap. We're frugal. We look for deals, we look for good quality stuff that we can pay at an affordable price. And I would put this group of executives here in Pembroke Pines up against anybody. I just have to tell you, I'm very, very proud of what they do, and I have great respect for the State of Florida, and I have great respect for the governor and his administration. But here in Pembroke Pines, we run a city that's easily 10 times more efficient than the state. So we'll leave the light on. Yes?
I agree with you. So I'm ready to come up with a, I want to make sure people know that I want the conversation. I'm not proposing one or the other. There is a committee with six proposals, they're in my newsletter. But I forgot to say something really important, kind of off this topic, but I don't know if many of you have been watching the social media that was going on in session. There was a, there was a bill that was going to, in the budget, was going to get rid of Cambridge funding, and AP funding for our schools. And so, of course, I filed amendment, made a big stink, yelled a lot. We organized, this city, the parents in the city were not going to have it. They said, we are not going to let them cut this opportunity from our children, because if you get an AP diploma, you go to college on a Florida Bright Futures. Because if you have AP classes, you're competitive, it can get into those Ivy League schools, University of Florida, FSU.
Yes, of course.
And this city organized, and this city emailed like crazy, and all of that funding was restored on the final budget hour. So I want to thank this city so much.
I'm glad that we're going to have honors classes in high schools.
That was the city.
Isn't that great? It's kind of crazy that we had to argue about that.
And that was this leadership, Mayor. That was you guys.
I want to thank you. Vice Mayor, anything?
I wanted to thank Representative Bartman, especially, I was at that meeting regarding Century Village, and with, they say bipartisanship is dead. No, she worked with Representative Vicky Lopez, a Republican from Miami, to get this across the finish line. We need more bipartisanship, and you're an example of that. Thank you from behalf of 13,000 residents in Century Village, income restricted, who have really been suffering with increases in what they pay every single month since the tragedy at Surfside and the legislation that accompanied it. I also wanted to thank Robin for her advocacy on education, especially out west. We have all A-rated schools, A-rated schools, excuse me, traditional public charter, high school, middle, elementary. Commissioner Rodriguez and I share that area. And I think that the fact that you have a background in education as a school board member for 16 years has really helped a lot of us out there who are new commissioners to understand how we could work better with Broward County Public Schools, and also handle our responsibility overseeing, I believe, we're the largest municipal charter system, at least in Florida, if not, if not the country. So I wanted to thank you, but especially on behalf of Century Village residents, thank you for what you did.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Good?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I too. You know, Representative Bartman said a lot, and thank you for all the representation that you've given to the city, and for ensuring that our quality of life is the best. And with your colleagues that also represent Pembroke Pines, Representative Woodson and Representative Robinson, I also would like to give them a shout-out as well, too. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Thank you so much, Representative Bartman. Out of all the great things that you did mention, I did want to kind of propose, if you are doing something on the sale, on the property taxes, these town halls, whether it's in our official capacity or our personal capacity, please feel free to reach out, because I think, and we've mentioned it on the dais enough, it is so important for people to understand, to be educated about what our property taxes pay for, because a lot of the internet is full of this misguided education to saying that you're either renting from the government, whatever it may be, and that people don't really know what their tax dollars are doing for them. And I think one thing that we can propose in that end, that we can help work on, is our communications. And part of the White Paper or report that we had on communications, one section was what your taxes are doing for you, what your dollars are doing for you. And so if we can start more actively campaigning on that end, and really build a coalition of people who understand what their property taxes do for them, and then therefore, they can kind of spread it to their neighbors, because if it does come on the ballot, I am sure it's easy enough for people to think, yeah, I don't want to pay that. But then you're literally defunding the police, you're defunding our fire departments, you're defunding all the public safety, not to say even anything about our roads, about our education system. All of those things really will be impacted, and I think we all have to work together, because the goal is to miseducate people and then get this bill passed, and diminish our power here on the municipal government side, where we talk the most to our local, with our local residents. All of you guys here, we really appreciate you coming to be informed about what your government does for you. Unfortunately, not a lot of us have the option to go up to Tallahassee, but you can call your representatives. If this does come up, Robin isn't the only one who's going to be fighting for us, it's the whole, hopefully, the Broward Coalition, and anybody really looking to work on this issue. So thank you so much for bringing it up, and I'll personally say for myself, anything that you need in that regard, please feel free to let us know.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you very much. And Commissioner Schwartz, wherever you are, I thank you for joining in. We hope that you had an enjoyable summer break. Did you have anything to add?
Representative Bartman, I've been in the city now for 36 years, and there's two state representatives that I have to put you on par with, Howard and Debbie. You've been one of the most active, engaged elected officials in Tallahassee for the City of Pembroke Pines in my memory, and I just want to thank you for your leadership, and I look forward to working with you on the reduction of homeowner's insurance for all Floridians in the upcoming session.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Representative Bartman. Okay, the next presentation is from the Okay, the next presentation is from the Police Department. And I'm going to stage this in the following way. So I was at home finishing dinner. When the phone rang, it was the police chief, and we were told that there was a serious plane crash in the Pines Village community. I rushed upstairs, got my official shirt on. No, I don't wear it at home when I'm not working. And I was there in 15 minutes. And the—there was press, and there were many, many residents. A plane that came under distress, flew horrifically into a tree, came straight down. The plane caught fire. The pilot and his family, that were returning from the islands, were trapped. Now, when you hear a thing like that, and you drop your fork, and you go to your front door, and you see that wreckage, and you see that it's already ignited, there's two kinds of people. There are the kinds that run toward danger, hearing that there were voices, and then there are kinds that close the door. And in the fullness of disclosure, I bet you, if you asked people, many of them would not have taken the risk that these individuals took. But they got out of their homes with whatever they had, and they pulled those people out of that fiery plane and saved their lives. And people from—started pulling garden hoses and putting out as much of the flames as they could. And fire rescue was there almost immediately to take care of the people and to finish the job that they started. They exemplify the city of Pembroke Pines. These are heroes. I would like to introduce to you the Assistant Police Chief of the city of Pembroke Pines, Serena, who is going to present these individuals with a much deserved award, followed by the reading of a resolution that we have prepared on an emergency basis for the county to begin looking at safety issues at this traditionally quintessentially Pembroke Pines facility. And with us to assist in these presentations are not only State Representative Bartleman, and not only our State Senator Barbara Sharif, but also a stalwart public servant, our District County Commissioner Alexandra Davis, who is here and who was with me on the ground immediately after this horrific crash. So Commissioners, if you would please, if I might ask you to join me and to join Assistant Chief Serena as he reads his proclamation.
Good evening, everybody. If Boca Raton Police Detective Scott Hanley is in the room, would you please join me? Emmanuel Laguna, Eddie Crispin, and Terrence Sheffield? Hi, sir, what's your name? Scott Hanley, nice to meet you. All right, so before we begin, we are doing a lifesaving award tonight, but I would like to invite some other lifesavers in the room down. Chief Rodriguez, would you and your staff please join us?
Yes.
It is with great honor that the Pembroke Pines Police Department recognizes and commends the extraordinary actions of Boca Raton Police Detective Scott Hanley, Emmanuel Laguna, Eddie Crispin, and Terrence Sheffield for their heroic response during a tragic plane crash on July 13, 2025, in Pembroke Pines, Florida. On that day, a small aircraft approaching North Perry Airport crashed, striking a tree at 6837 Southwest 14th Street. The plane immediately caught fire, trapping the pilot, an adult passenger, and two children inside as thick black smoke filled the cabin. Without hesitation or regard for their own safety, Scott Hanley, Emmanuel Laguna, Eddie Crispin, and Terrence Sheffield rushed to the burning aircraft. Armed only with a sledgehammer and their courage, they broke the windows to ventilate the smoke and used their shirts to shield the victims from broken glass. Working together, they safely extracted the pilot and two children. Despite the intense heat and danger, they continued their rescue efforts, freeing the final adult passenger, whose legs were pinned in the wreckage. Thanks to their swift and selfless actions, all four occupants survived with non-life-threatening injuries. Their bravery embodies the very definition of heroism and reflects the highest ideals of community service. In recognition of their courage, determination, and lifesaving efforts, we proudly present Scott Hanley, Emmanuel Laguna, Eddie Crispin, and Terrence Sheffield with this lifesaving award. Mayor Castillo will be presenting the awards. Are any of the passengers from that plane here with us tonight? Okay. On behalf of the city of Pembroke Pines, thank you, gentlemen, very much for your heroism and bravery.
Thank you very, very much. Ladies and gentlemen, our Florida State Senator, Dr. Barbara Sharif.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the Florida State Senate, we recognize your bravery and courage. And tonight, my proclamation reads just like Chief's proclamation. And it says, and I'm going to read just the end of it, whereas Detective Scott Hanley is the recipient of the lifesaving award given to an individual that demonstrates outstanding acts of courage by the city of Pembroke Pines Police Department, and now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Senator Dr. Barbara Sharif of the Florida State Senate District 35, do hereby recognize Detective Scott Hanley for his heroic effort in helping to rescue plane crash victims in Broward County. And whereas Emmanuel Laguna is the recipient of the lifesaving award given to an individual that demonstrates outstanding acts of courage by the city of Pembroke Pines Police Department, and thou therefore be it proclaimed, I, State Senator Dr. Barbara Sharif of the Florida State Senate District 35, do hereby recognize Emmanuel Laguna for his heroic efforts in helping to rescue plane crash victims in Broward County. He's not here right now. Okay. And this proclamation is for Mr. Eddie Crispin. And it says, Eddie Crispin is the recipient of a lifesaving award given to an individual that demonstrates outstanding acts of courage by the city of Pembroke Pines Police Department. Now therefore, I, Senator Barbara Sharif of the Florida State Senate District 35, do hereby recognize Eddie Crispin for his heroic efforts in helping rescue plane crash victims in Broward County. And last but not least, we have Terrence Sheffield. And you are the recipient of the lifesaving award given to an individual that demonstrates outstanding acts of courage by the city of Pembroke Pines Police Department. And now therefore, I, Senator Barbara Sharif of the Florida State Senate District 35, do hereby recognize Terrence Sheffield for his efforts, heroic efforts, in helping to rescue plane crash victims in Broward County.
Ladies and gentlemen, Florida State Representative Robin Bartleman.
I just want to say that when we think of heroes, we think of red capes, we think of uniforms. And they are all real heroes out there, our fire, our police, our military. But you were neighbors. You just saw something, and you ran out to save lives. And not a lot of people do that. Not only that, without thinking, every single one of you put your life in danger, because you didn't know if that plane was going to explode, you were going to get hurt. But your heart and soul, you did what was right. And for those in the accident and for their families to know that the world is still full of really good people who'll put their lives on the line for others, you know, it restores my hopes sometimes. We see everything going on in the world, and then I have the three of you before me. And I'm like, I'm really lucky, because you guys are amazing. So to your families, who, thank you so much for these men and supporting them. And I know they were probably like, you did that. Oh, my God. I could just imagine what your wives and your family thought. But you're heroes. You didn't need a cape. You did what was right, and you went in to save lives. And so because of that, we are forever grateful to you. Those families are forever grateful to you. And you are an example in this community. I have certificates for you. I have my card in here. If I can ever do anything for you and your families, I'm not going to read anything. I'm just going to hand them out and give you each a hug, because you are real heroes. Thank you so much.
Ladies and gentlemen, our good friend, a dear supporter of our community, Broward County Commissioner Alexandra Davis.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I certainly want to commend you for the work that you did, selflessly putting your lives in danger to save others. There's been a lot of talk with the county, and we are really pushing hard for safety at that airport. There was a recent downed aircraft as well. And I am pushing for a date certain, August 27, for our first town hall. You're all invited. It's going to be at the library in Pembroke Pines, right near Perry Airport. We want a plan of action. We want to hear from you. We have some thoughts as well. As you know, many of the aircrafts actually are housed at our facility. We want to have more input in how they are maintained. And so that's right now the work of the FAA, but we want to be able to get that information from them for everyone that houses their aircraft at our facility. Of course, my proclamation reads as everyone else does, but I also want to recognize the police and fire departments, because they came in after. But without them, we know every disaster, they're always there. So I have a couple of proclamations for you as well. In addition, this was requested by me, Broward County, and I just want to read just among the names. Whereas among those who acted with valor, were Boca Raton Police Detective Scott Hanley, Emmanuel Laguna, Eddie Crispin, Terrence Sheffield, and other unnamed neighbors who unified—whose unified efforts saved lives and prevented further tragedy. Be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Broward County that Tuesday, August 5, will be known as North Perry Heroes Appreciation Day in recognition— Thank you. —in recognition of the selfless acts of courage, quick thinking action, and community solidarity displayed by these local heroes. Thank you again.
And as she hands out these awards, I know that your hands are full, but I want you to know that our hearts are full of pride and respect for all of you. And I know that you have lived in Pembroke Pines a long time. And as your mayor, I don't know what more we could do for you, but I'm sure you'll think of something. And we will only be too happy to be there. These documents, by the way, which are framed so that you can display them if you wish, are part of the public record of the governmental agencies that got them. Forevermore, you will be remembered as a hero. And for all of that, I want to thank you. And we'll try to do something about your lawn. Last photo? Thank you all very much. Okay, folks. If we could— If we could all take our seats, please. And I know that TV News wants to do some interviews, and that's why we have a beautiful lobby outside, so that we can do those. Okay. Okay. I'm going to be taking an item out of order, which as mayor, I authorize to be put on the agenda, knowing that Commissioner Davis, her time is limited, and she was going to be here today. And so Commissioners, with your indulgence, we don't always do it this way. The item is legally properly notified, advertised to the public. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
It is, Mr. Mayor.
However, because this was a life safety issue and because it happened all so quickly, and especially in light of the other crash that we had just yesterday, I thought it was important to make sure, and again, because our colleague and good friend, Commissioner Davis was present, that we place this before you today. And this is going to be a resolution that we're going to read that basically mirrors, though it goes a little bit beyond, the letter that I immediately sent on behalf of the city after the event to the county, which I know that they've received, asking for an independent, immediate, thorough safety analysis, asking for the long-awaited air quality study because of the lead in the air, which was found by the EPA to be in high concentrations at this location, and to renew their interest in the existence of the Community Advisory Board, which was created, Commissioner Davis, by your colleague, the mayor, Beam Furr, when he was the district commissioner. And we thank him for that, because it was the first time. it was the first time that anyone from the community had ever been invited inside of that airport to talk about the issues that they encounter as neighbors. City Manager Dodge and I met with the county administrator, I believe Charlie, it was almost two months ago?
Yes.
And we went over these issues, and we look forward to hearing the responses. The city attorney is going to be reading the resolution completely, from top to bottom. And again, that's not something that we do very often, but I'm going to ask him to do it today so that there's no confusion over what we're asking for. However, first, I was contacted by Meg Bishop, who is the mother of Taylor Bishop, who was killed in the car on 72nd Avenue, and after whom we named 72nd Avenue. And Madam Clerk, if she is available, I would like to give her an opportunity to speak, and then I'm going to ask the city attorney to read the proclamation. Mrs. Bishop, are you there?
I am.
Mrs. Bishop, we're all here, there's about 50 people in the room, many of them have an interest in the airport, some because they use it, some because they live around it, all because, all be, all with great respect for you and the loss that you've had, and I want to, and I want to give you an opportunity to say a few words to us about the effort that we're about to undertake with this resolution.
Yes, and before I get started, I just want to thank you, Mayor Castillo, and also Commissioner Tom Good for always allowing me to have a platform to share my son's legacy and continuing to spread the message that he should still be here. And I also want to thank the Fire Department and Police Department, if they are still present.
Yes, they are.
I could never thank them enough either for everything they did on that day. I just want to say that in a perfect world, my son would be here, and there wouldn't be almost 40 plane crashes in five years. But we don't live in a perfect world, and as much as I want my son to be here, he's not. And typically fatalities ignite change, and to this date, I have not seen change come from that airport, and it reflects in the crashes that we have seen. In September of '22, which was just a little over a year after my son's passing from the plane crash, a plane, a tornado ripped through North Perry Airport and destroyed several planes. And then in October, less than a month later, those planes were up in the air, and one crashed into a house. And I find that very disheartening to know that putting those planes up in the air that quickly after being destroyed by tornadoes is very concerning. What's also concerning is that in an article posted by the Miami New Times by the author Naomi Feinstein, she wrote that the planes were amateurly built and experimental planes. I'm not sure why there are amateurly built planes flying over residential neighborhoods, or why there are experimental planes flying over residential neighborhoods, but I can assure you, if that wasn't the case, we wouldn't be seeing the numbers that we're seeing. Thank you.
I just want to tell you that we, we share in your pain, and we want to make sense of it here in Pembroke Pines, and I cannot thank you enough, Mrs. Bishop, for everything that you have said, and the room is still at the sound of your voice, and we thank you very, very much for taking the time. We know that you're away, and the fact that you would call in and wait and speak so eloquently to us is a privilege, ma'am. And I just want you to know that the City of Pembroke Pines is now and will forever be at your side in any way that you ask. So thank you very much.
Thank you, I truly appreciate it.
Before I ask the city attorney to read the item, well, no, I'll ask him, Mr. City Attorney, can you just read the entire resolution as you have crafted it, you and staff, and then I will ask for a motion in a second, and we'll have our discussion.
Mr. Mayor, without objection from your colleagues to read not just the title, but the document in full, I will do so without objection from the mayor and commission. This is proposed Resolution Number 2025-R.
Without objection.
Thirty-six. It's a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, strongly urging the Federal Aviation Administration and Broward County to investigate potential unsafe flight traffic and frequency conditions, and produce findings and recommendations identifying ways to improve safety and reduce the number of plane crashes at North Perry Airport. Renewing the City Commission's request to Broward County to fund, implement, and produce findings of a study to assess the lead concentration levels at North Perry Airport and within the surrounding residential community, providing for transmittal, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. Whereas the North Perry Airport, represented as HWO, is operated by the Broward County Aviation Department, known as BCAT, B-C-A-D. And whereas the Federal Aviation Administration, known as the FAA, is responsible for the safety of civil aviation, including issuing regulations and standards covering the manufacturing operations and maintenance of aircrafts. And whereas North Perry Airport is an approximately 500-acre public-use general aviation airport that has four fixed base operators, 154 T hangars, over 200 tie-down spaces, 11 flight training schools, and over 60 aviation-related businesses, including aerial advertising operators, aircraft maintenance, aircraft engine maintenance, helicopter and airplane tours, and helicopter news operators. And whereas the FAA Air Traffic Control Tower at HWO is the busiest federal contract facility in the United States. And whereas BCAT, B-C-A-D, updated the North Perry Airport Master Plan through a public process in the year 2020. And whereas a general aviation master plan serves as a comprehensive roadmap for the long-term development of an airport, guiding its growth and ensuring it can meet future aviation needs while adhering to safety standards and community goals, as well as identifying facility needs and considering environmental and socioeconomic impacts. And whereas the North Perry Airport Master Plan Update adopted in the year 2020 forecasted that by the year 2035, that the airport would have approximately 255,000 annual operations, that's takeoffs and landings. And whereas operations in 2023 and 2024 far exceeded the 2035 forecast by reporting over 310,000 operations annually, or over 850 operations per day. And whereas 41 planes have crashed in and around North Perry Airport in the past five years, resulting in several fatalities and significant property damage on the ground. And whereas the United States Environmental Protection Agency, excuse me, has identified North Perry Airport as one of the worst general aviation airports in the country when it comes to deadly lead emissions, with only four other airports generating more of the poisonous substance that was banned in automobile fuel decades ago because of its danger to humans and particular children. And whereas the City Commission formally requested in the year 2023 that Broward County conduct and produce the findings of a study assessing the lead concentration levels at North Perry Airport and the surrounding residential community, with the passage of City Commission Resolution Number 3830 attached here to Exhibit A. And whereas to date, the city has not received the results of such study, and has no reason to believe that Broward County has conducted that requested study. And whereas the City Commission has determined it is in the best interests of the citizens and residents of the City of Pembroke Pines to strongly urge the FAA and BCAT to investigate the impact of the increased airport operations on flight safety conditions at North Perry Airport and related environmental impacts, as well as to renew its request to Broward County to conduct a study on the lead concentration levels in and around the North Perry Airport to identify measures and take actions that will protect residents and visitors of the surrounding area. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, as follows. Section one, the foregoing whereas clauses are hereby ratified and confirmed as being true and correct, and are hereby made a specific part of resolution. Section two, the City Commission formally requests the Federal Aviation Administration and Broward County to investigate potential unsafe flight traffic and frequency conditions, and produce findings and recommendations identifying ways to improve safety and to reduce the number of plane crashes at North Perry Airport. Section three, the City Commission formally renews its request that Broward County conduct air quality study to determine the air pollution levels, including the lead concentration levels that are present in and around the North Perry Airport and within the surrounding residential community. Section four, the City Commission requests that Broward County de-authorize the North Perry Airport Community Advisory Committee as an advisory board, and to replace it with the North Perry Airport Standing Oversight Committee, with the authority to provide comprehensive reviews of the airport and its impact on the surrounding community. Section five, the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a copy of this resolution to Brian Bedford, Administrator of the Federal Aviation Administration, as well as Acting Regional Administrator Ryan Almazy, A-L-M-A-S-Y, forgive me, please, and Acting Deputy Regional Administrator Elizabeth Semeda, S-M-E-D-A. Section six, the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a copy of this resolution to Broward County Mayor, the Broward County Board of County Commissioners, and the Broward County Administrator. Section seven, all resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict therewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Section eight, if any clause or section or other part of the, or application of this resolution is held by any court of competent jurisdiction to be unconstitutional or invalid in part or application, it shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions or applications of this resolution. And last is section nine, this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its passage and adoption, and it is then a matter for the mayor and commission to consider by appropriate motion to approve, should that be the wish of the mayor and commission. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
It's a move, Mr. Mayor.
This, this motion is moved by Commissioner Good, is there a second? Seconded by the Vice Mayor, and again, thank you very much. This item is in front of us because I did not want my letter, which only had my signature, to be the only document that had issued. I wanted the City Commission as a whole to speak, and that's why this resolution is in front of us. Before we begin discussion, I do not have any conflicts in voting or any appearances of impropriety whatsoever with this matter. Vice Mayor, do you have any conflicts in voting or any appearances of impropriety? Do you plan to, to plan to vote on this matter?
No conflicts, plan to vote.
So do I. Commissioner Good, do you have any conflicts or appearances? Do you plan to vote on the matter?
I have no conflicts, Mr. Mayor, I plan to vote.
Commissioner Rodriguez, do you have any conflicts or appearances of impropriety? Do you plan to vote on this matter?
No conflicts, plan to vote.
Commissioner Schwartz, do you have any conflicts or appearances of impropriety in connection with this matter, and do you plan to vote on it?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to acknowledge the officials of the FAA and BCAT for their continued work, and under the rules and procedures of Florida statutes, I am declaring my intent to complete Form A, 8A, within the required timelines and accordance to state law, and will be abstaining from voting on this specific item.
Thank you very, very much. We will have one round of commission, followed by public comment, followed by a second round, if commission wishes it, and then we'll vote. So Vice Mayor, do you have anything to say?
I agree with the wording of the resolution, and I actually have been contacted earlier today, not just by residents since the most recent incident occurred, but also by members of the news media. And what I always caution residents who contact me with hearsay is read the resolution. What we are discussing here, and our city attorney, Sam Goran, who's been working for the City of Pembroke Pines for four decades, read, is what we are voting on. We are voting on asking our partners, and they are partners even though they're different governmental agency, the Broward County Aviation Department to be specific, to look at making the airport safer. And I was not a commissioner at the time, I believe Commissioner Good, correct me if I'm wrong, it was your motion to study air quality in 2023.
It sure was.
And I believe it was seconded by, well, by one commissioner, but voted unanimously, if I'm not mistaken, in 2023.
Yes, sir.
For that study. So there are two things, as I read it, that we are voting on. One, FAA and Broward County Aviation, let's make this safer. And the comments that I have been making is, it's not okay to just say, oh, well, it's an airport, accidents happen. Yeah, tell that to the residents that live by there. That's not acceptable. That's not what government should be doing. Make it safer. We can, and I'm sure the FAA, working with Broward County, can do that. And the second piece is, study the air quality. And although I've only been here 15 months, we have residents who have come here in different meetings in the year 2024, and probably in 2025, asking for an air quality study that the county funded since 2023, allocating the funds, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, Commissioner Good. So that's why I'm voting in support of this, and I'm glad that you had Mayor, our city attorney, read the actual resolution, which is a public document, and any resident in the City of Pembroke Pines can read it as well, so that they are very clear on what is being voted on this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing this up. Thank you, Mr. Attorney and your staff. It's not easy to put this information together. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Good?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At first, I first want to say to Kiki, you still with us? Is she still with us?
Meg? Are you still there, Meg?
Yes, I'm still here, I am, yes.
So I just want you to know that I'm sitting here today, and I'm wearing your green Taylor Tough pin on my lapel. I am having a very heavy heart going through this, knowing that you are having to relive your past and your loss. And I want you to know that I still cry with you whenever I have thoughts about what happened on that unfortunate day, and I want to thank you for you continuing to have the strength that you have to move forward and to work in positive ways in order to ensure that your son, Taylor, not only lives strong, but that you support others who may go through these type of losses as well. And all I want to do is say I love you, thank you. I want to speak a little bit about an interesting conversation I had just recently with a friend, you know, who does do pilot, or he's a pilot, he flies planes and things like that, and he was making reference to me about what they call the pre-flight check, right? And so basically, in a pre-flight check, you know, you go through your whole thing about whether, you know, this works, that works, will this work, will that not work, this, that, and the other, and if everything's a go 100%, then the operator makes a decision to fly. And what's really important about that is that in that moment, that's when there's a confirmation of the mechanical integrity of the airplane to make flight, as well as the competency of the operator to make a decision to take a flight. And one of the things that happens is that occasionally, you will not get 100% of your pre-flight checks completed. And a good, responsible operator would say, you know what, I ain't flying this right now because I ain't got 100% of my pre-flights correct here. Something's wrong, I ain't flying it. But then you have others who like to live a little closer to the razor's edge in life, and will take that risk, and will put themselves in harm's way, and possibly others in harm's way as well, too. So this, this resolution does nothing more than ask for an elevated, enhanced, and enhanced mechanical and operational safety. So that's what we're talking about, mechanical and operational safety in these aircraft. Now, interesting, watching the debate about the airport, one of the common themes that pops up is the comparison of an aircraft to automobiles, right? We all hear that, you know, there's We all hear that, you know, there's more accidents with automobiles than when they're airplanes, but statistically, you'll see that the percentage is actually higher with aircraft. But but let me give you an evolution of of automobile safety since the 1900s, right? We had the Model T, everybody remember that, Ford's Model T, you all got a picture of it, no roof, brake on the side, then wheels, crank, right? So, you know, automobiles, you know, started, you know, since back then, and and there's a history of evolution of safety in that. So over the years since 1900, we've had improved structural features on these automobiles that improved reliability.
Absolutely.
And operational control. As time goes on, not only were seat belts introduced, but today, they are now mandatory to use. There's no more letted fuel in automobiles, it's only unleaded fuel. We also know that almost every vehicle has an airbag or two in it for an added layer of protection. Every year, we have vehicle safety ratings, every year, so that the public knows how safe those vehicles are. Drunk driving laws were created, and enforcement increases every year. And then we have blind spot detection nowadays, crash avoidance, pedestrian detection, automatic emergency braking, and driving monitor systems that have since emerged. The point that I'm being, that I'm trying to make here is that as long as this airport exists in a densely populated community in Pembroke Pines, what's wrong with demanding safety and health improvements in airplane equipment and operations, just as the country did with vehicular safety? We should be using all the studies and the research, we should be using crash data analysis, we should be using regulatory oversight, and we should use technological advances for aircraft safety. Maybe we'll find out that this airport is in the right place with improvements, and then maybe it is not. You know, our mission is in our code and and in our charter, and it's the same mission as every other government agency has. And that mission is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public. That includes our residents, our visitors, our businesses, both outside and inside of that airport. So what are we waiting for? Let's get this done, and let's stop finding ways to not do anything about it. So, Mr. Mayor, I will certainly be supporting this resolution and more. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Good. Commissioner Rodriguez.
I will also be supporting the resolution. I, before having this position, I previously worked at Broward County Commission under Commissioner Tim Ryan, and while I was at his office, he was one of the liaisons for the advisory committee for this airport. In the case that he wasn't able to go, or something of that sort, as a staff member, I would attend. And I know firsthand and familiar to these people in the room because I would go in, quietly sit in the back, and kind of take some notes for for my commissioner at the time, but understood when the, or was there when the vote was passed for the air quality control test. We heard all the commentary from from the residents in the room, we heard their hearing stories about just the the amount of soot that is built up on their backyards, on top of their cars, everything in the in the spaces of their homes, all of that because of the unleaded paint. And so there is definitely evidence, whether it is.
Let me guess.
Sorry, guys. There's evidence of of that tangibly, and now we just need to make sure that we're getting the statistics and the data to back those concepts up, because we know that our residents are feeling it in their own backyards and in their front yards and kind of on the roofs and everywhere else around their homes. And and at that time, it was passed, it was sent over to Broward County to be processed and for the for the quality control test to be done. Unfortunately, it has yet to be done, and that is part of this resolution. And even since being on this day is, I've seen just how this has moved, just how much the residents care to to continue to bring it up, for them to continue to either come to us, to commission meetings, to the county, everywhere in between, because they want their voices to be heard. And I think this is not just a great start to that, to that mission of theirs, but for us to continue to do a lot more. This, a part of it is through Broward County Aviation, but a major part of this is through the FAA. And we really have to kind of put our hard hats on and go forth and advocate to the FAA, and it's a big organization, it's national, it's something that, you know, kind of goes goes above our head, but if we are making this promise here, we have to follow it with action and continue to work with our residents to see what more we could advocate for on the national stage.
Thank you very much. Let me just add that no one has any particular animus toward the aviation industry. I mean, that's almost, it's almost ridiculous to have to say that. But the minute you come up with a logical concern about an airport, suddenly you're an anti-airplane person. And I have to tell you, I I fly planes all the time. I love it. It's it's beautiful, it's a beautiful thing. When this air, when this airport opened up in Pembroke Pines, and by the way, there were houses before the air, the county owned this airport, I think their major safety, one of the major safety concerns there, Commissioner Davis, was making sure that the cows weren't on the runway. There are people who who still remember when cattle used to graze on that, on that land as as the few, underlying few airplanes that came in and out flew around. Pembroke Pines understood that it was a relatively sleepy airport. The Broward County Commission at the time agreed, and more houses were built. There was really no risk because there were relatively few flights in and out. Fast forward to today, North Perry Airport is the busiest general aviation airport in the state of Florida. The 10th busiest, Vice, Commissioner Good says, in the United States. Nobody asked for that. They have 850, on average, 850 takeoffs and landings per day. Our friend Mike Stam tells me that the air traffic control tower is there, is open from 7:00 AM to 9:00, is that correct? And then, and then after the, after after there's no tower operation, takeoffs and landings, understandably, in the evening, drop off significantly, right? And the residents in the community will will attest to that based on their own life experience. After 9:00, it really just sort of does die down. That means that there's a takeoff and a landing, and this is rough math, every minute. In the time that it took me to just say that, there's already been a takeoff and a landing on average at North Perry Airport. Nobody ever asked for that. About 10 years ago, we saw their plan, and I'm going to ask Mike Stam if he can come forward and give us those numbers again. They projected 10 years ago how much traffic they would have in 2035. You have to do this for for the FAA. But here we are in 2025, 10 years earlier, and they've already significantly surpassed what they said they were going to do in terms of operations at this airport 10 years from now. What are the numbers, Mike?
Good evening, Mayor Mike Stam, Assistant City Manager and Director of Planning and Economic Development. Mayor, the 2019-2020 North Perry Airport master plan anticipated about.
And this was adopted by the Broward County Commission?
The Commission heard it in November of 2019.
And they voted for it?
That's my understanding, sir.
Okay.
Everything we've seen. The North Perry Airport, they projected about 255,000 operations annually by 2035.
255?
Which is plus or minus.
Thousand by 2035?
Correct.
Go ahead.
Which is plus or minus 700 a day, operations a day. Based on the North Perry Airport fact sheet, which was published earlier this year in April, in 2024, there was 317,000 operations at North Perry Airport last year. In 2023, there was about 311,000 operations. So the last two years, we've exceeded 310,000 operations.
So the last two years, we've already exceeded what they said they planned on having 10 years from now?
That is correct, that is correct, and that was adopted in 2020.
So.
To the FAA.
And and they cater to smaller, generally older planes, correct?
I don't have the exact statistics on all the ages of the planes. This is a general aviation airport, so as you know, the length of the runway, there's limitations in terms of the weight of the planes and the size of the planes that can operate at North Perry Airport.
I I I have to tell you that it it just sounds to me like way too much traffic for a place this close, and now add that there are 11 pilot training schools there, 11. And I mention that simply because they, when you look at the fire chiefs, staff's crash data, and I want to thank you, Chief, and your staff for putting that together, it shows that there have been 42, now 43, accidents associated with North Perry Airport over the past five years, and many of them have something to do with flight training, which is, you know, that's what happens. And I'm all for people to learn how to fly. I just don't want them crashing into into houses. I don't want them killing children, I don't want them killing themselves, I don't want them coming down in a fireball, and I don't think that's too much to ask. And I think that all of us have expressed that in one way or the other. We want them to be a good neighbor, but they have to be good, or they need to be gone. And that's all there is to it. We are sick and tired of having planes crashing down on 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 our communities. That's it. It's it it it, and and I don't know that we have the answers. We don't run an airport. Other people do that. We run a city, and from the perspective of the city, this is a problem. It's a problem. So I I I I just want to end by saying this. We are so incredibly fortunate to have, in Alexandria Davis, a county commissioner that cares, that understands, that knows how to get things done, that, trust me, she was Vice Mayor and a Commissioner in Miramar for a long, long time. She's been around the, like, before that, worked in government for many years. She knows the drill, and she and she can smell it out when she's being given a line, and we've all been there, and she knows what's possible when government is motivated to put their shoulder into something and get it done. And that's what we're asking her to lead and her county commissioners to support so that we can get this thing figured out, because the situation right now with North Perry Airport, in my humble opinion, is incompatible with the standards and the quality of life that Pembroke Pines must 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 live. So I want to thank you for for that. Those are, those are my comments on that issue. Commissioner, did you want to say anything, or did you just want to, I'm not putting you on the spot, you just wanted to observe?
Yeah.
And let me just say, I I I brought her flyer, which is going to go around. Commissioner Commissioner Davis is holding a town hall meeting, we thank you, Mayor, for for doing that. She's hosting a town hall meeting on August 27, 2025, from 5:30 to 7:30 at the South Regional Broward College Library, that's at 7300 Pines Boulevard in Pembroke Pines. And we're very thankful that you're going to be holding this town meeting on North Perry Airport, to hear from everybody. She wants to hear from people, and we do, too.
Absolutely. And I I just want to say, and as you know, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, that I actually live in the path of these aircraft. I live in Pembroke Pines, I'm probably the first commissioner at the county level to represent you that actually lives in Pembroke Pines. So I know firsthand, I see them morning and evening, and I know that it's just a matter of time before the next incident or accident occurs. So we have to be ahead of that, and I want to work with our congressional folks that oversee the FAA to make sure that we have accountability for 417 aircraft that are housed at our facility. And so it's going to take a concerted effort, but I'm willing to lead that. When they had sunsetted the board, I was the one who said, I need that to be revitalized, renewed, and put back into commission. It would have died a death. But as your representative, I know even from the city of Miramar days, we've had several crashes there. I'm sure the city of Hollywood also. So there's a lot of voices that want change, and we will make sure that that happens, and we're going to start with the town hall. So thank you so much, and stay tuned. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners.
And we want to thank you for your leadership and and the work that we look forward to to doing together with you. All right. I got some people lined up to to speak. I want to remind everyone, it's 8:00. I'm still not done with presentations, we've got a long agenda, and then after that, we have an executive session tonight. So we we're going to have a late night, no matter what, but what you have to say is important. If if you hear something that's already been said, you don't have to say it again, trust me. We 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 record this on TV, it's transmitted live, and our clerk is excellent at recording the the comments, so if you hear something that's been said, you really just, you don't have to say it again. Okay, I have two, let's see. Some of you did not fill out what you wanted to speak about, so I'm going to have to take Okay, the first speaker will be George Corin. Everybody's going to get three minutes. You don't have to use the three minutes, but you can't go beyond. Your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. I'm George Corin. I reside at 6751 Southwest 11th Street in Pines Village, a resident of 50-plus years there, and I'd like to thank everyone for their input this evening, because it's way past due that we've come to this point. I'd like to just reiterate a couple of things, to a different slant, not to be so repetitive, but to say that we've all been saddened by the crashes that have caused significant property damage, personal injury, loss of life, and the long-awaited investigations by the FAA to come up with a specific cause of an incident that is usually where it ends. You know, it winds up as a report in a file somewhere, there's no, not much definitive action. North Perry Airport is a unique place, as is the geographic location of Florida. FAA and EPA produce guidance and limits to which general aviation is to adhere to. One size in this incidence does not fit all. The airport needs to be fine-tuned for the residents of the airport. Everybody is so super concerned with inside the airport. The residents, we're the ones that have been left behind by what I'm going to call the saturation of operations at the airport. And this became a problem post Hurricane Andrew, but yet it has been allowed to fester this long. I don't understand why, and alarm bells have been going off for at least the last 25 to 30 years. But I think maybe partly it's been the approach to where we go with the issues, and I think now we're making progress in that area, because Broward County Aviation. now we're making progress in that area, because Broward County Aviation, which I can personally attest to, because I sat on the the old, the Community Advisory Board, they are basically powerless to make specific changes. That has to come from the FAA and the EPA. We would submit issues, and, uh, to the best of my knowledge, a lot of this stuff didn't really get pushed up the chain, because we, me personally and others on the committee, asked for very specific things.
Yes, you did, and I want to thank you, Mr. Corin. You've, uh, you've been a a champion on this issue for many, many years, and I want to thank you for your comments. The next speaker will be Robert Garcia.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Your name and your address for the record, please.
Good evening, Robert Garcia, two oh eight four zero Northwestern Court, Pembroke Pines, and I think the last time I spoke in front of commission about this subject, I think there was talk of closing airport. I'm glad that this is a very, I think, balanced, well-worded, um, statement by the council. Um, I do think there is a, from what I'm observing, a significant issue with the federal oversight of the operations at the airport. I think there are some things B-CAD can do, um, to invest in the airport. B-CAD, per my understanding, only has two airports, HWO, North Perry Airport, and Fort Lauderdale Hollywood International Airport. It's very unusual to have an aviation department run such a large airport and then a much smaller operation without other smaller operations. So that's something Miami Dade Aviation Department has several different operations. MIA is not their only beast. So that's one thing that is unusual about the B-CAD arrangement.
It's it's five airports in Miami International.
Right, they have, they have, you know, TMB. Yep, no, you're you're correct, and and this is unusual for this circumstance, because, you know, you have one airport with a lot of focus, and then you have another airport that is bursting at the seams. It is the closest airport to Hard Rock Stadium. A lot of folks, when we have events there, that venue has exploded, right? In the time you can, since I I know I was a kid here in Pines, you know, you had football for the Dolphins only, and you had baseball, and that was about it. No one was going to be flying in unless there was a Super Bowl or a high-level playoff game, which the Dolphins haven't really played at home since they moved there from the Orange Bowl.
Please don't, don't hurt me with that.
Believe me, they've hurt me enough that I can't be hurt anymore when it comes to football. But the thing with the airport is it's still kind of that army surplus, here you go, Broward County. And so there are things Broward County can do and that they should do, things as simple as having backup power for the airfield systems, so the weather doesn't go out, the lights work when the power is out. That's important in emergency response. We're going to be happy to have that airport if we get hit by a big hurricane. It's a nice place to operate out of. But on the flip side, having almost fifty planes crash out of the air in five years is unacceptable, and that's where hopefully. You know, it seems like every time we talk about things in front of commission, it's the interface between city of Pembroke Pines, what it can control, what it cannot control, right? I look at peer cities that have airports, municipal airports. The city is either the controlling factor, or there's a state independent authority which runs the airport. It's very unusual, again, other than Miami Dade County with the situation with their five airports in in NIMDAD, to have that situation. So I think one thing eventually the county may want to look at is transferring the airport to either an independent authority or a combination of the three cities that are so heavily surrounded by the impacts of the airport. Or I I think advisory boards are great, but I don't feel like, without the weight of the county politically, supporting B-CAD with that operation, it's going to be very hard. So I I think the tough thing, I think this is a very well-worded statement, I'm very happy with it, but I would like to see the city help in the solutions department either with a changing of the governance of the airport, lobbying for that, while also lobbying the federal authorities that have the responsibilities for the safety, to make sure that they're doing their diligence, that you know who they are, that they're not just mysterious figures, because they're in the community, they're here, a lot of them even live in the city, and they they need to be present and available, and you all need to have contact with them, the staff certainly should, to make sure that the whole community is safe, because it's not just about, you know, all of us that live in the city, but also, they get up in the air, we could have them come down anywhere else. A lot of times they come out west where I live, and they just, on the west side, I can hear the ambulances. So just something to think about. It's a combination, I feel, of the feds, but also the governance of the airport with the county. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much for those comments. Next speaker is, uh, Mr. Gil Lerner. Mr. Lerner, if we can have your name and address for the record, please? You will have three minutes.
Good evening, Commissioner, uh, Mayor.
Good evening, Commissioner, Mayor, Vice Mayor, uh, City Manager, City May, um, Attorney and Clerk. I wanted to just mention that, and I, is is the woman still on the telephone that lost her son?
Yes.
I I, my heart goes out to her just as sincerely as it does, um, Vice Mayor Hernandez, Vice Mayor Hernandez, as well as, um, Commissioner Good, as well as, um, Commissioner Rodriguez. But unfortunately, airports are basically small or big, regulated, more or less in the same fashion, and the lead is not the problem. I can assure you that, because there's no way airplanes are going to fly without avgas. Avgas requires lead, the use of lead. So with all due respect, the soot problem, that's another problem that would need to be addressed in another way. Moreover, um, I don't think the age of the airplanes have really much to do with anything, because just like buildings have forty-year inspections, those planes get thorough inspections. As you know, Mr. Mayor, you fly.
I don't fly. I I I I'm a passenger.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I thought I I thought I understood you were a pilot, my mistake. So moving forward with that, um, I I really don't believe it's that. I believe it's the thoroughness of the mechanics, just like our previous mayor, Frank Ordus, used to be an airline mechanic, and I think he was a fantastic one after speaking with him briefly about mechanics, due to me having a background associated with that. And so with all due respect, I think this issue needs to be looked at and approached from a more professional angle in order to be, uh, properly addressed and and as as quickly as possible, because I understand there's great concern with people, and I see the planes flying over my house, too. I have the concern. I I look up in them, and I'm thinking, hey, you know, maybe Jay Schwartz is going to land on me, but he's also a a instructor, and I don't know if he's a good one or not, but I don't, I don't want to rule out closing the airport, um, in lieu of five accidents over the course of, what was it, how many years? Five years? Oh, you guys, anyway, so basically what I'm trying to get at is, I think, um, uh, people like Mr. Schwartz, people like myself, people like-minded in the aviation industry and repair industry should get together and really find a way how to resolve this problem, because the lead isn't going to do it, the planes won't fly, they'll fall out of the air.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lerner. Now, I have, um, a number of folks, I'm going to read your names. If if you were signing up for this item, uh, raise your hand, and if not, just stay seated and, okay, and and I will get to you, okay? So I had a form filled out by Adamir Geddon. Is Adamir here? Okay, and then I had another one from Juan Pearson. Sorry? Not this item, okay. And then I had another one from Ram Terrari. Ram, did you want to speak about the airport? Or, because I see here, community news. Okay, no. Then there's Tim Griffith. Is that you? You, Tim? Yes, sir. Do you want to speak on the airport?
Yeah, we can.
Go ahead.
Tim Griffith, two oh eight seven one Northwest First Street. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry?
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, uh, to the Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorney. Common sense aviation does not make you anti-aviation. I stand, uh, to put my full support behind this resolution. It's good resolution, good legislation, good regulation equals good public safety, and so I fully support this resolution, and I think majority of this room support this resolution. And, Mr. Mayor, thank you for having the, uh, City Attorney to read that. The words were well-done, well-stated, and, uh, I think it'd go a long ways to bring about the type of change, uh, that you, this day is, and all of us in the city of Pembroke Pines would love to see.
Thank you so, thank you so very, very much. The next speaker who signed up, um, is Richard. Ra, oh, Ram Charatar. Oh, there you are, Richard. This is on the airport, sir?
Yes, sir.
It's good to see you. How you doing?
Very good, thanks.
Good.
Thank you, sir, very much.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Richard Ram Charatar, Southwest one sixty-six Southwest Ranches. Good evening, Mayor, um, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorney, City Clerk, and community members. I come before you not only as a concerned resident of West Broward, but as someone with a lifelong background in aviation safety and airport operations. I've worked with Can-Am, Evergreen International, and American Airlines at JFK in Miami, managing aircraft operations, emergency response, flight safety, and safety audits. I've also served on the Airport Advisory Board in Dania Beach and worked as an aviation security consultant after nine eleven. I understand the risk and what it takes to reduce them. North Perry Airport has seen far too many crashes. There, these are not just accidents, they're warnings. This airport is surrounded by dense neighborhoods, schools, parks, and major roads. Every crash puts real lives at risk on the ground. It's time for action. I urge the city of Pembroke Pines to partner with Broward County and North Perry Airport to create a joint safety task force, including professionals, um, like myself, FAA liaisons, first responders, and community advocates to assess flight volumes, land use compatibility, and to propose meaningful safety reforms. We need to look closely at whether the number and type of flight operations at North Perry are still compatible with the urban environment it sits in today. Mayor Castillo is right, enough is enough. Let's work together to prevent the next tragedy, not respond after it happens, and I'm ready to help. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, Richard. Thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to be heard from the public? Seeing none, a public discussion is closed. Oh, one more? Go ahead.
Scott Barnett, one nine three four six Southwest Fifth Street, formerly of six three one Southwest Six Eight Avenue. I used to live in Pines Village, um, when I moved here over twenty years ago, and I remember seeing crashes year after year. Uh, I just, you know, I've been debating this subject with some neighbors, and, uh, unfortunately, I'm a little disappointed, because there are a lot of people out there who just kind of take the attitude, it's not my problem, and we've seen with the heroes of this, uh, recent events, um, it matters when people, uh, take responsibility to help their neighbors, uh, so I applaud them for that. Just a quick thing about when people talk about comparing it to cars and autos, I just wanted to make a quick point. When we get into a car, we go into a controlled roadway. We are making that choice to go into that controlled roadway, and we know what the dangers are. When it comes to planes, you know, no one makes the choice of, you know, those lanes of travel for those planes. We have no choice in that matter, so I think it's a little bit different in in the case of planes. The other point is, uh, you know, I don't know too much about aviation. I I am actually a licensed FAA pilot, and, uh, over the years of flying drones, which is not like a regular pilot, I will tell you that I have never had any inquiries, thankfully, but any inquiries or any oversight from the FAA, and one of the problems we have is something we can't control, is a severe lack of enforcement by the FAA. They're understaffed and underfunded, and that's, uh, unfortunate. But when you think about the fact that, uh, as I understand it, a private, to be a private pilot, you only need forty hours of training compared to professional pilots who need anywhere from fifteen hundred to thousands of hours, um, just that forty hours, um, it questions, there's nothing wrong with people who want to be beginners, amateurs, work on experimental aircraft, um, but, you know, it's time to take a look at where those activities happen in safer areas where we don't have these problems, so thank you.
Thank you very much. With with that comment, that ends a public comment. Commissioners, at your pleasure, we can, uh, have a second round of discussion, or we can call the question. What's your pleasure? Call the question? Call the question, Vice Mayor? The question is called. All those in favor of the resolution, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Madam Clerk, show the motion passes unanimously with one abstention. Returning now to the.
For the record, Mayor, if I manage to create the public record, the permanent resolution number that will be affixed to this document, given the the vote count this evening and the abstention, is number thirty-nine twenty-one, three nine two one, for the benefit of the public. Thank you.
And Commissioner Davis, we really want to thank you for your indulgence, for your patience, for your devotion, for your dedication, and we look forward to working together with you. You can count on us, and we know we can count on you. Thank you so very much. Okay, returning now to presentations. This is a proclamation to the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, declaring the ninetieth anniversary of Social Security. How about that? Ninety years. I've got some friends from AARP to come forward, please, and, uh, and, uh, accept this award. We're going to get to you right away. I'm sorry to make you wait. Whereas on August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five marks the ninetieth anniversary of the Social Security Act, signed into law in nineteen thirty-five, establishing one of the most endearing, impactful institutions in American history. And whereas for nine decades, Social Security has provided vital financial protection to millions of Americans, retirees, people with disabilities, surviving spouses and families insuring, uh, economic security and confidence, and where Social Security has stood the test of time, providing dignity, reassurance, and support to people. Hey, how are you? All across walks of life, regardless of income, background, or political affiliation, and where Social Security plays a crucial role in the lives of many Pembroke Pines residents by providing an earned benefit that helps meet basic needs such as housing, food, and health care, while also offering stability and peace of mind. Now therefore, I Angelo Castillo, Mayor of the greatest city in the world, I mean it, Pembroke Pines, along with the city commission, do hereby proclaim, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, is the ninetieth anniversary of Social Security in the city of Pembroke Pines, and encourage all residents to reflect on its legacy and to support efforts that will protect and strengthen Social Security for generations to come. Congratulations and happy birthday.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, we're here to celebrate two great milestones that happened just this week. One was the thirty-fifth anniversary of the Americas of Disabilities Act, which I'm here represented by my friend Chris, another gentleman of mine had to leave, and we're also here for the ninetieth anniversary of Social Security, which impacts so many people in our community. Each, all of us here will eventually need Social Security or one of the services provided under the Americas of Disabilities Act, so we're here to fight strongly for it, and I just want to say a few words about Social Security, folks don't really know about it. It was signed by Delano Roosevelt, Franklin Delano Roosevelt, nineteen thirty-five, or August fourteenth. Uh, the ADA, which is comparable, was signed on January twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety by George Bush Senior. So those are great. So those are great milestones, and it's the most successful and widely supported initiative in the American history, helping generations of older Americans to avoid poverty, live with dignity, and after a lifetime of hard work. In its 90-year history, Social Security has never missed a payment, and for the past 65 years, ARP has been fighting to protect it and is committed to protecting and strengthening this vital program for all of us. Leaders of both parties have consistently supported Social Security, and now more than ever, we need them to speak out, to celebrate its legacy, and ensure it remains strong for total, today's older Americans and future generations. This year, ARP proudly honors that legacy while continuing the fight to secure Social Security's future. We're working on leaders across the political spectrum because protecting Social Security isn't a partisan issue, it's an American issue, and it's an American priority. We extend our heartfelt thank you to the mayor, the council, on all the work that they do to protect the Americas of Disabilities Act. Myself, Angela Milton, were there on Saturday, where they just dedicated the park and made it accessible under the Americas of Disabilities Act. I was so proud to see that park renovated, and thank you my Scott Barnett, and another special thanks to the Assistant City Manager, Christine Golden, which had a lot to do with that, and that means so much for us.
And all of these people approved it.
And all these folks approved it. So again, I want to thank the City Commission, and we have a great city behind us. We're proud to be residents of Pembroke Pines, and I can't say enough about the city and the leadership in this city. My lady, Robin Barnum, which is also very influential, I know she had a step away, but I'm also giving special recognition for her, Senator Sharif, Commissioner Alexander Davis, and all the legislators around the state and country that protect the Americas of Disabilities Act and our Social Security program, which we're all going to need. So again, I want to thank Mr. Mayor, and I also want to say, I'm celebrating this proclamation with ARP, and we are grateful and honored to be here today to celebrate those two events. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. What a special, special birthday. Let's take a photo. Good? Okay. Thank you so much. All right. Oh, here it is. I'm sorry. Okay, so next up is, uh, four, five. This is the Natalie Belmonte Great Yards Award. You'll do that?
Yes, sir.
And this is for District Two.
And District Three, sir.
And District Three. So if District Three can join us.
Mayor, I'd like to invite down the Mitsen family and the Suarez family.
Oh, wow.
Mayor, since we don't meet in the month of July, we bring both the families down here in August, and we'd like to congratulate both of them for their outstanding yards. So this is for the Mitsen family. Why don't you guys go on this side over here with the mayor? Go on that side. So Mayor, our District Two winner for June 2025 is Juan and Eileen Suarez. This is their wonderful home.
Oh, wow.
They've just got phenomenal landscape, they do a great job, and really proud of just showing what we can do in our community here. And again, don't want to take anything away from everybody, we're doing two recognitions tonight, but our District Three winner is Ty and Matthew Mitsen, and this is their yard. So, you know, Mayor, when we started this program about a year ago, I wasn't sure what we were going to see, and these pictures just tell it all. Our community is really dedicated to their homes, making them look great, and I'm really proud of this program. I think it's great to recognize our families and the people that put so much into their houses.
Well, that's fantastic. Let me start with you. What's the secret?
Her.
She bosses you around? But who came up with the design, and how does it all?
A lot of sweat and getting out there and planting things.
She does, we don't have a gardener or anything, she's supposed to work.
She does it all herself?
I have to carry all the bags.
Well, somebody's got to carry the bags. You know, you've been complaining all night now. All right, so you're getting 50 bucks at Home Depot, who's going to spend it?
Me.
And what's your secret?
Him.
What does it take to keep a great yard?
I just do it as therapy, just to kind of relieve the stress from work. And it's very gratifying, the end result, so I enjoy doing it.
Well, I've seen your house, you must be a stress-free guy.
No, still a lot.
I just want to say thank you for uplifting these homes, because it's these beautiful homes that really make all of Pembroke Pines feel a lot more safe, a lot prettier, and it really adds to not just the property values, I assume, but to the feeling that we do live in a very well-kept community. So thank you to you both.
What a perfect thing to say. Thank you so much. Let's take a photo. Oh, and look who's here, from Code Enforcement. What do you think? Are they behaving out there?
They sure are.
Let's take a photo. All right. Oh, yes, yes, I will. Zach will take. I can't thank you guys enough. Thank you so very, very much, and congratulations. Okay.
Mayor, we'll be back next month with our District Four winner.
Can't wait.
Please, everybody nominate your great yards.
Fantastic. Next on the hip parade, we have a presentation, announcement of the winner of the District O, no, we just did that. Okay, so the next one is, uh... A video from the Broward League of Cities. You got that? Listen, we've been a member of the Broward League of Cities for a very, very long time, and they sent us a quick video on what they're doing here at the Broward League, and please enjoy it.
Hello, I'm Mary Lou Ty, Executive Director of the Broward League of Cities. It's my pleasure to share a little about who we are, what we do, and the impact we've made across our beloved Broward County. The Broward League of Cities was founded over 60 years ago with a simple but powerful mission, to bring together all 31 municipalities in Broward County and establish a unified voice. Our mission is rooted in collaboration, advocacy, and education, working to strengthen local governance and ensure the highest quality of life for our residents. The One Broward theme is the heart of our work. One Broward is more than just a slogan, it's a mindset, a belief that if we work together with a shared vision, we can continue to make Broward the best place it can possibly be for all of us. Over the last nine years, One Broward has guided and inspired our efforts. Through this lens, we've built, connected, empowered, engaged, united, energized, embraced, innovated, and experienced our work program to help our cities develop strong public policies that serve every resident. One of our notable achievements was securing $102 million in CARES Act funding for Broward's 31 municipalities during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic. This critical funding supported our cities in providing additional revenue to cover COVID-19 costs, as well as essential services such as emergency housing assistance and enhanced public health measures. Another example of our advocacy in action was negotiating a higher reimbursement rate for school resource officers, ensuring the safety of our children and educators remains a top priority, and these officers play a key role in solidifying a more secure learning environment. We also played a vital role in creating the Solid Waste Authority of Broward County, a landmark achievement to develop a comprehensive and sustainable approach to waste management. By bringing together stakeholders from across the county, we've established a system that will benefit our One Broward environment and communities. Most recently, our focus has shifted to promoting civility and municipal government. Through fostering respectful dialogue and collaboration among our leaders, we're helping them work more effectively to serve the people of Broward County. The Broward League of Cities is more than just an organization, it's a partnership, a commitment, and a voice for every city in our county. Thank you for your support. Together and through the guiding principles of One Broward, we're building a brighter, stronger, and more united Broward for generations to come. We look forward to working with you to make our shared vision a reality.
Thank you very much, Broward League of Cities. You do a wonderful job, and you have for many, many years, and we appreciate your work. Now, now we have a presentation from Heather LeBlanc, who's the Senior Wildlife Assistant Biologist from the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, and she's going to present a PowerPoint on the best methods for dealing with urban and suburban coyotes. Now, let me tell you how this came up. So I got a phone call from someone I won't mention, Heather, in a community that, it doesn't matter where it was, it was out west, and she said, Angelo, you got to call me back right away. That's what the voicemail said. And I called her right back, I said, what's up, hon? And she says, there was a coyote in my yard. I go, well, that happens, you know, we live in, you know, in the Everglades, and every once in a while, that's going to happen. He says, well, this is the second time I've seen him this month. I said, really? I said, wow. He says, not only that, but he ate all the food I left for the ducks. So Heather, I decided to invite you so that you could talk to us about what we have to do in order to live in this beautiful community of ours and not risk these kinds of dangers, because I didn't know how to handle that phone call.
Yeah.
So I want you to help us to understand what it is that we have to do in order to be good Evergladians.
Of course. Thank you for inviting me here tonight. Again, my name's Heather LeBlanc, and I am one of the Senior Wildlife Assistant Biologists with the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission. So I'm going to go over a little bit of information about coyotes and then some ways to prevent conflicts. Coyotes haven't always been present here in Florida, they are considered a naturalized species, so they've migrated here on their own, typically starting out west, and they made their way over to Florida. And this expansion happened for a couple of reasons. So we did used to have a population of wolves here in the eastern United States that has been extirpated from the wild, so they're no longer present, and wolves are a predator of coyotes. So we kind of removed their natural predator, allowing them to expand their range. And then we've also converted a lot of the landscape in the eastern United States. A lot of people think that development in the area is inherently bad for wildlife, but coyotes are a species that thrive in urban and more developed areas. They love an open, grassy field, so whether that's agricultural field or a golf course, that is their favorite place to kind of hang out. And in Florida, they kind of trickled in, starting in the 1980s in the Panhandle, and then made their way throughout the rest of the state. And we've been able to gather these data from sightings, research studies of live animals, but also carcasses, and even just personal communications from residents. And the most southern sighting is even down in the Florida Keys. So they are present in every single county in Florida. And even on the barrier islands along the coast, they're really great swimmers, so it's no trouble for them to get out onto the islands as well. This is a coyote swimming out in the Lake Worth Lagoon, pretty far out. They are true omnivores, and they're highly adaptable, so they don't just eat meat, they eat pretty much anything they can come across. Their average weight is 25 to 40-ish pounds, and they have home ranges or territories that varies depending on the type of habitat they're occupying. So in a more naturalized habitat, their home ranges are a lot bigger, an average of 15 square miles, and that's because those food sources that they need to survive are more spread out, so they have to forage for those food sources. Whereas in urban areas, their home ranges are a lot smaller, typically averaging around three miles, because we concentrate food for them in a much more easily accessible way for them to access it. So things like bird feeders, duck food, outdoor pet food, all of those are things that coyotes will take advantage of. They typically mate in the winter, which is when we get most of our calls, just because they're a lot more active, and then they have their pups in the spring. They are really secretive denners, and so a lot of times, the activity that people see typically drops off in the spring. Their litter size is about six pups, and both parents will provide care for the young. The agency did a coyote diet study from 2011 to 2014, and this really just shows how diverse their diet is. They don't just eat meat, although that is a significant portion of their diet. They do provide really great pest control, so they eat a lot of insects like roaches, but they also eat vegetation, so plant matter, berries, nuts, and seeds, all sorts of things like that. And then about 9% of their diet, we found, was anthropogenic or human-provided food sources, so not things that they would have come across naturally in the wild.
90%?
Nine, not 90.
Or nine?
Yeah. But some of these more natural food sources can still be things that people provide, so if you have like blackberries planted in your yard, the coyotes could eat that too, but it would, in our diet study, would show up as a more natural food source. I mentioned their average weight is only around 25 to 30 pounds. It's pretty common for us to hear that people compare coyotes to the size of a large dog, like a German Shepherd or a Labrador. They might be as tall as one, but they don't weigh nearly as much as that. They're really tall and lanky, but they don't live the lazy lifestyle of a domestic dog, and so their weight is generally a lot smaller. And we do get a lot of questions about if there's any benefits to having coyotes in the area. I mentioned they do provide some pest control, so they eat roaches, they eat mice and rats. But they also control our meso predators or our smaller predators, things like opossums, raccoons, and foxes. So they provide an important control for those smaller animals that would have historically been controlled by the wolf populations. And that's a real benefit to a lot of our other native wildlife, because these meso predators, the opossums and the raccoons, are significant nest predators to a lot of our native bird species, so they will eat the eggs and chicks. And having a larger predator like coyotes to control those smaller predators does help our native wildlife to thrive. And there are some potential for human conflicts. The main one that we hear about is concerns over pet loss. So coyotes will go after small pets, typically cats and dogs, small dogs that are left unattended. These photos were taken in Lithia from a trail camera, all the same camera, but within a couple hours of one another, we captured a bobcat, a coyote, and a domestic cat. It's unknown if this is a feral cat or someone's pet cat, all passing through the same area. So if little animals like cats and small dogs are left outside by themselves, there's a lot of risks that they could face, and one of those is potentially predation by wildlife. There's a lot of concerns about human safety as well, so this is just a little bit of information comparing statistics on dog attacks to people versus coyote attacks. So from the years of 1970 to 2020, so that's a pretty significant time range, there's an average of 8.9 attacks from coyotes to a person per year. There's only been two fatalities in the last 50 years, and a lot of these incidents are related to human-sourced attractants or human-sourced food items that cause the coyotes to linger in the area. If you compare that to domestic dogs, there's an average of 1,000 emergency room visits per day in the United States due to dog bites, 5 million cases per year that require medical treatment, and 236 fatalities just during the time span of 2015 to 2020, so a five-year span compared to two fatalities from coyotes in a 50-year span. Another concern we hear a lot about is rabies. While coyotes are a mammal, they are a potential rabies vector species. Here in Florida, we don't see a lot of rabies in coyotes, so the 20-year average is less than one coyote that tests positive, and if you compare that to raccoons, there's 75 is the average, and cats average 11. We always like to point out that there's been more horses in Florida that have tested positive for rabies than coyotes. We can't get rid of coyotes, they're compensatory breeders, so if you remove one from the habitat, they will increase their breeding rate to kind of make up for it. They're not easy to trap and remove, and they're very territorial, so if you do remove one from the area, it's very quickly replaced by another animal. So we really try to promote ways to coexist with coyotes because they are here to stay, and some of the best ways to do that are here on the slide. So you never want to feed coyotes, whether it's intentional or not. It is illegal in Florida to feed coyotes, so that is a violation just because it does make them more comfortable around people, which isn't something that we want. So it's important to remember that anything that can attract a dog, cat, or a raccoon can also attract coyotes, not just- not just because they will come to eat that food source like the bird feeder, but they will also come to eat the little animals that are eating at your bird feeder. So the rabbits, squirrels, and birds that congregate in those areas. Garbage, also a huge attractant, as well as outdoor pet food, fallen fruit. They love avocados and mangoes, so they will take advantage of any food sources that are available, as well as bird feeders. And then also, just reminder of pet safety, so keeping your cats indoors and keeping your dogs on a leash or being supervised while they're outside, so having a person present with them. And then we also recommend hazing or scaring without harm. So this is really just reinforcing a coyote's natural fear of people. The best way to do that is to yell at them. Honestly, the human voice is a great wildlife deterrent, but there's a lot of different options as well. So whistles, banging pots and pans, or even use of an air horn are all great ways to scare a coyote if you do happen to see one. If you have them just passing through the yard, and that's a concern, there's also motion-sensing deterrents that are pretty effective at scaring off a lot of wildlife. In particular, I like recommending the motion-sensing sprinklers. They're pretty easy to set up with a water hose, and they don't make any noise, so your neighbors are not likely to complain about that. And then just some more general advice, a reminder, not to leave any food out that attracts coyotes. It is a violation in Florida, and to prevent them from accessing things like garbage or outdoor pet food, keep your cats inside and keep your dogs attended. Haze them off if you do see them. If a coyote approaches, lift up any small pets or children off the ground. You never want to run away from wildlife that can trigger an instinct for them to chase. So it's really best to just try to scare them off, and if needed, back away from the animal slowly. But incidence of coyotes exhibiting aggressive behavior towards people is incredibly rare. So if residents have questions or concerns or conflicts with coyotes in the area, there's many ways to get in touch with the agency. Our regional office number is listed on the screen here. If people call in, they can be directed to speak with the biologist to get more specific information. But we do also have a ton of information available on our website, myfwc.com/coyotes.
Thank you so very, very much for that very informative presentation. I want to commend your colleague, your law enforcement colleague who is here, and thank you, sir, for your service. So generally speaking, if you want to help keep coyotes out of your yard, don't leave food outside.
Yes, that is the easiest way to do it.
And another way of saying that is, well, don't leave food outside.
Yes. I completely agree.
And yet another way to say it is, do not leave food outside.
Yes.
Because you could attract a coyote.
Food, garbage, small pets, any of it.
And not only that, but if you do that, you're breaking the law.
Yes.
And we will have this phone number now made available for people who leave food outside so that we can possibly report them.
Yeah, if there is food being left out that coyotes are accessing, that's definitely something that could be reported to our law enforcement.
Because you should not be leaving food outside.
Absolutely.
I want to thank you very, very much for your presentation.
Thank you for having me.
And for your good service to our area. We are so very proud here to live in the Everglades, and you helped explain it in a way that makes it livable. When I got here, one of my neighbors who had lived in this area for a long time, and I said to him, what's it like with the wildlife? He says, use this, never this. And I'll never forget that he said that to me.
Yeah.
Enjoy it with your eyes. Keep your hands away from it.
Leave it alone.
Anything, any critter, anything that's wild, leave it alone. Just enjoy looking at it.
Yes.
And I've never forgotten that. Was that good advice, by the way?
That was perfect.
Okay, because in my house, we never leave food out.
Yeah.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service. Okay, now, we have the commission auditor. And I want to thank you for sitting through what must have been a very interesting presentation to you.
Extremely.
It's been a very, very good evening. In fact, it's not quite 9:00, and we haven't really started yet. We're still on presentations. So I think that's a new record. But the floor is yours, and thank you for all that you do. Our commission auditor.
Thank you. Good afternoon, sorry, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner. My name's Eddie Castaneda. I'm with the Commission Auditor's Office, Senior Manager at Forest Mazar. We're here to present the results of three contract compliance audits as part of the 2025 Audit Plan and to present those results as Managing Director at Forest Mazar is Kristi Clements.
Hello, good evening. All right. As he mentioned, we are going to report the results of three projects that we have completed and provide an update on the annual plan. The first vendor audit that we will cover is Facility Contract Services, FCS. The city engaged FCS, just as a bit of background, to supply personnel necessary to carry out functions that benefit the city. The original contract was signed in 2018 for a five-year period and then amended in April 2023 for another five-year period and is set to expire September of 2028. Just as a bit of information, as part of that First Amendment, the burden rate, which is the reimbursement of indirect costs, was renegotiated from 20% to a maximum of 19.5%. The scope and objective of our project was really looking at the accuracy and completeness of employee background checks and drug testing, and then also the controls around the review of the payroll invoices and the accuracy of the burden rate. So that's our objective and scope. So for background checks, we conducted the testing on that and noted zero exceptions. We tested 147 employees to make sure their background checks were being conducted, drug screening, et cetera. So no exceptions there. They were able to provide evidence for all of the items requested. The burden rate, we recalculated. It was applied appropriately throughout the year. However, we noted that there is no policy or procedure outlining how it is applied throughout the year. And so we just provided a recommendation that that could be an enhancement, and that would increase transparency and business continuity for standardization. Management has agreed with that, and they are going to issue a memo. And then the admin fee, which is also part of the agreement and contract, is $1,500 a month. We noticed on the invoices that the admin fee and the burden rate were combined, and so it causes or has the potential to cause some confusion. So we're just recommending that on the invoice, the burden rate and the admin fee be separated out for more transparency and to better inform. The second project we completed was Calvin Giordano and Associates, CGA. The city had hired them and contracted with them to do inspections and permit reviews. A little bit of background, the contract was renewed in November 2021 at the same time that the city was implementing Intergov, which is the ERP system. That new system went live in April 22 and replaced Inkforce. With the implementation of the new system, there were a number of processes that changed. And the latest amendment to the Building Department contract really did not contemplate or give consideration to some of those changes, and we'll cover those here in a minute. Has a bit of background, approximately 43,000 inspections and 35,000 plan reviews are completed annually. As part of our testing, we looked at timeliness of both inspections and performing the plan reviews and then looking at the fee collection process. The current contract between the city and CGA states that inspections must be completed in one business day. We tested the entire population for a two-year period. We tested 86,585 inspections for timeliness and noted approximately 7% were not completed within the required timeframe. And that 7% averaged about an 11-day time period. The city explained that inspection requests now can come in, really 24 hours a day, through the portal, which that is a change to operations and can have an impact to the timeliness of inspections as well as weather or inspections taking longer or resource constraints. So our testing methodology, just to be clear, we accounted for those after-hour submissions by adding an additional day into our analysis and also gave consideration to the four-day work week. We recommended that the city really update or incorporate a newly established standard. One day, management should determine, or the city should determine, if a one-day turnaround should continue or would arrange with the new process of receiving inspection request, would arrange be more appropriate. That's something to consider. Plan review timeliness. Plan reviews are broken out into three different types of permits. Has listed here, major permits. There's a 10-day requirement per the contract, median permits, five-day, and minor permits, one day. We selected a sample of 150 plans from a population provided to us from the city and performed those reviews. And out of 150, we noted approximately 13% were not reviewed within that timeline. And I think it's important to state that the data within the system, right now, it is not populated by the plan review type, the major, median, or minor. So when we receive the data, that has to be populated manually. And that is a recommendation that we're making just for monitoring performance and reporting to be able to capture that data within your records. Management may experience challenges without that in monitoring vendor performance without having the permit types within the city. On average, they were about five days late. And so we just recommend that the city work with Intergov to explore the feasibility of either adding a field or determining where they can add plan types to monitor vendor performance. We also noted inconsistencies between the fee collection operations and the contract. The contract currently states that the vendor is responsible for fee collection. However, with the implementation of the new ERP system, the city has taken responsibility for those collections. And so on a monthly basis, there's an invoice to the city. 88.5% of the gross revenues goes to the vendor, and the city retains 11.5%. So our recommendation is just going forward to either amend the contract or in future contracts, give consideration for the process change so there's alignment between the contract and what's actually occurring. The third project we completed is the Transportation Authority, who provides the drivers for the transportation of seniors, charter schools, schools, and also seniors. And we looked at background checks and driver testing to make sure those were occurring, and then testing the invoiced amounts. And all of our testing returned no exceptions related to that contract compliance. An update on your audit plan. Four of the projects have been completed now. The lobbyist review, waste pro, and risk assessment have all kicked off. And the risk assessment planning just started this week. We have some internal planning underway. But otherwise, your 2025 internal audit plan is scheduled to be completed on time and has intended. Any questions?
I want to thank you for the work that you're doing. It points to many, many strengths, and it also points to areas where improvements are possible. I also am very thankful that you meet with the people that you audit and that you go over your findings with them before reporting them. Because it's easy to misunderstand a thing, or it's easy to sometimes miss something. Many years ago, I did a fair amount of auditing, and I always wanted to be fair to anyone who I audited in terms of giving them access to what the findings were well in advance and giving them enough opportunity to respond and to offer comments or clarifications where appropriate. And your firm has consistently done that since we've been with you. And I also want to commend the city manager and his staff and all of our contractors for working cooperatively with you and finding a way forward. Nothing is ever perfect. Ask my wife. And I will tell you that every arrangement is sometimes imperfect. But the goal can't ever be perfection, but it can be improvement. And it can be verification that you're getting value for what you're paying for. And as I read your reports, and I read every page of them, I want to tell you that I was actually pretty impressed. Particularly in the Buildings Department, they operate under great stresses. An inspector goes out, and the contractor isn't there, and then they have to wait. And/or the, you know, it takes forever for somebody, they made an appointment, oh, I forgot, I was getting my hair done. Or I was delayed at my child's ball game, or I had to go into work. And then it has to get rescheduled. And then I'm constantly being called by people who are saying, why does it take forever to get a permit for a hot water tank? And I call up and I say, why is it taking forever to take a hot water tank? We have no permit for this lady's hot water tank. She never even, so very often, the contractor is busy and tells the, oh, it's the city. And they didn't even apply. And sometimes they apply, and they're missing a document without which they can't do their review. And sometimes the systems capture these things, and sometimes the systems don't. But if they must, if you're applying, for example, for a fence permit, and you don't submit a survey, how the hell are they going to be able to approve your permit to put a fence on, potentially on someone else's property? Even though it's been, that most of the permit has been in their hands for weeks, they don't have all of the essential ingredients in order to be able to make a call. And it's very, very frustrating for them. But somehow, they plod through, and they do issue these permits, and they do work with people, and they do answer the phone, and they do have meetings, and they do a number of things that, you know, that are necessary. And they show flexibility when that's possible, but they enforce the law. And the proof is in the pudding. We here in Pembroke Pines have an outstanding fire rescue operation, and most of their work, overwhelmingly their work, is in rescue, not fire, because we're well protected by the code. And there's no better way to ensure that something is properly built than making sure that it gets built right the first time. And so I'm just very, very thankful for all the work that we get and for the work that you do. And those are my comments. Vice Mayor?
Thank you.
I appreciate the hard work and answering my questions when I reached out directly to you. And I'm looking forward to, I believe we have three more, if I'm reading my screen correctly.
Yep.
Yes.
So thank you both very much for your professionalism.
Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez.
I just want to say thank you very much for, you know, your timeliness of doing things. I don't have any questions at this time, but I do have questions.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Hi, thank you again. I think I'll go what everybody else has said on the timeliness. I know we kind of came at this with you guys a little bit on the slower end, so I really do appreciate that these have been coming in as we are preparing to renew some of these contracts. One, for the CGA contract, I wanted to know if we had looked or if you guys had looked into a little bit more on the customer service satisfaction. I know that you are limited in the data that you do receive, but was there any aspect of the audit that looked into that other than the time that it would have taken? of the audit that looked into that other than the time that it would have taken for?
No, we were focused on the timeliness of the turnaround from the request being received until either the plan was reviewed or the inspection was completed. I think we had 165 hours on that project. But going forward with the risk assessment coming up, that may be something that falls out of the risk assessment that can be included in the plan going forward.
I think that that, and it could be for all of our, all of our contracts that are forward facing to our residents, understanding the customer service part of it, just how easy this technology is. And I know it's, you know, in partnership with the contractors that we have, but all of these services, whether it's water billing, like all of these different things, I think how easy it is to do these permits online, that is, at least for me, the customer satisfaction side, a very important part of it. And if that can be included, you know, if we can amend some of this, include it or do it as part of the risk assessment, I think helps us dig in a little bit deeper as to when we're looking at to these new contracts because not just for this one, but for anything, that's what we're giving to the residents. We were making comments a little bit earlier and thank you guys for staying all this time, but making sure that people understand that their tax dollars are working for them. And when they aren't working for them and when we're not being efficient enough, we need to know what the issue is. And in order to identify what the issue is, we need to have these kinds of feedbacks. And so that goes to maybe something we can work on internally, including in our contracts, that every big contractor that we use to be able to connect with our residents does have some kind of field of feedback and be either through the contractor or our website, you have a concern, you want to report an issue, something of that sort, because the most likely thing people will do is come reach out to us. But we need to make it a little bit more accessible and maybe in some kind of way, grab that data that is out there of the concerns of residents so that we are making, we're making sure we have our finger on the pulse and saying where the issues are lying because I think we don't have one centralized location to look at the complaints that people get with the services that we're giving them. And that goes ways outside of your scope per se, but I would, I would like to see that as part of when we're validating future contracts because that is a crucial way that we can identify what contracts are working because internally they can be working very well for us and for our staff, but if they're not working for the residents and it's just too hard to, you know, pay your water bill or do whatever or your local business tax and things like that, it's a harder step and we're here to serve our community. So that's, that angle would be really, really helpful in, not just this one, but in every contract that we do and that you can't do anything unless we give you the data to. So that maybe can be part of something that we work on together in the future because that feedback is very much, yeah.
I love the idea of the customer satisfaction service.
Because we are, there are clients, there are residents, but they like really do pay for these services via their taxes. So I think that's a good point to make.
Absolutely. Yes, that feedback is so important for continuous improvement.
Yep. Thank you very, very much. Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Mayor. The work that the Commission Audit is doing has been fantastic. What I would like to see though is a little bit more time for the final report being issued to give our vendors an opportunity to digest it and to be able to provide us feedback in a forum like this. I don't know, I don't expect that to be possible tonight, but any of the vendors who are being audited, I certainly want to have an open invitation for them to come forward and have an open line of communication and discuss with us some feedback about the audit itself. There's always an opportunity for improvement on all sides. And I do know that when I see our Commission Auditor find an opportunity for administration to make changes, administration always says yes. The thing that makes me sometimes question is how long has it been going on before the question was asked? So for us as the elected body, we have, we have a role to ensure that both the administration and the vendors who work with us are doing the best they can. And if we can support them, whether it be through policy or through financial budgetary reasons, I want to make sure that we do that. But again, thank you so much for working all summer on these three big contracts. I'm looking forward to the wrap up in the next couple of months. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Fisher, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Returning now to and completing items at the request of the public. Ram Tarari, are you here? He's left, okay. Scott Barnett. Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Scott Barnett, 19246 Southwest Fifth Street. There's going to be a lot of talk next year about next year's celebration of the Declaration of Independence, the 250th anniversary.
America 250.
And I talked with the mayor and Commissioner Good a little bit about this and I think there's some opportunities that we can have our Commission lead the way. I just wanted to offer some ideas and because I know it takes time to implement these kinds of things, but I talked with the mayor previously about is there a possibility to reproduce some of the original documents, the Declaration, the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, maybe put them in the city center in a public venue so that people can read what it says, so that we understand what our, what our rights mean. We wouldn't be here if we didn't have those documents. I believe our city attorney would not be able to base his opinions on anything unless he had the start with the Constitution itself. So it provides a framework for all of us as Americans. So I would love to see that if there was a presentation that we could put in the city center, maybe it's something that could even be permanent. And I'm not talking about a major thing, but just reproductions of those documents for all to see because we have a lot of activity, public activity in the city center. And so I think that's one way to honor that. The other thing I'd like to think about is I know that the Commission does some great work with our veterans in our community. Commissioner Good is a veteran, so thank you for your service. I just saw George Corn here and, you know, he's a valuable member of this community. I would love to see if there's a way that the Commission could move forward to create more connections between veterans and our community, especially the younger community. And maybe there are opportunities, whether like, for instance, with the Youth Advisory Board or with some of our schools, to have some of these veterans be able to go around and just talk about, you know, what it means, freedom, because we happen to live in an age with everything else going on, we happen to live in a really nice time and our children really enjoy certain freedoms that our forefathers and mothers didn't enjoy and really had to work hard. So I would love to see instead of just, obviously there's going to be Memorial Day and July Fourth and Veterans Day to honor the veterans, but it'd be great to see if throughout the year, especially next year, if there's a way that there can be connections and communications and really engage our veterans because they're a valuable resource for us to learn from. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Wonderful ideas and we will, we will have to study them all very quickly. Thank you. America 250 is a big deal. You're going to hear a lot about it and we should, we should play our role very, very proudly in that effort. Now, Ademir Gedin, I think you wanted to speak on item 19, is that correct? So I'm going to hold on to this until the item comes up and I want to thank you for submitting your form. And Juan Pinson, are you here? Are you also item 19? All right, I'm going to hold on to this and then we're going to talk about it when, when item 19 comes up. Is that fair? All right. Vice Mayor, if we could just pass these down and we are done with that. We should order a report. Any appeals to Board of Adjustment Decisions?
No, Mayor.
Okay, under announcements and board or committee appointments, I, I got many resumes and it was a hard choice, but I picked Catherine Minnis as the alternative member of the Arts and Culture Board simply because her resume stood out as it always does on the, on the application. And I want to thank everyone who applied. However, my choice falls to Catherine Minnis. She's here today, she'd like to come up, say hello. You're on.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Clerk, City Manager, City Attorney, and the community. My name is Catherine Minnis. I reside at 1400 St. Charles Place in Park Place. And I am excited and thank you so much for the appointment. You know I love Pembroke Pines too. I've been here since 2019, but have served this community over 33 years working for local government. I'm back in the school system and would love to, you know, render my service to the committee and looking forward to doing the best of my ability.
You will. You do a great job and thank you very much for coming forward and for helping to make Pembroke Pines a better place. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have the Consent Agenda, which consists, Commissioners of Items 1 through, it's a big agenda because we've been off, 1 through 18. 1 through 18, that's correct. What is your pleasure? Any polls?
I don't have any polls. I motion to approve the consent agenda.
No, I, sorry.
Do you have any?
Motion to pull, sorry, pulling number 13.
Number 13 for Commissioner Rodriguez. Hold on one second. Any others?
17B, 17B as in Bravo.
17. Any others? Any from the public? Seeing none. I need a motion on items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 14, 15, 16, 17, A, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, and Q.
Motion to approve.
And 18. A, B, C, D, G, F. No, no, there's no F.
Correct. No, it's all of them. I motion to approve, I think Commissioner Good's.
Motion's made by the Vice Mayor, signed by Commissioner Good. Any discussion? Any from the public? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. Show that passes unanimously. Commissioner Rodriguez, you're recognized on item 13.
After reading?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Motion to approve first amendment to the agreement with Inter County Engineering, Inc. the rehabilitate sewer lift stations in the amount of 743,830.79 for all the remaining work to be performed, MLS number 4, LS 25, LS 29, and LS 39, which includes $102,938 in contingency. I was the one who...
Is there a second to the motion?
Sorry.
Second by Commissioner Good. Commissioner Rodriguez, you are recognized.
I appreciate staff putting together the answers for the Monday night memo. I did put in quite a couple bit of questions for this item, mostly because I had gone to the water treatment facility and seen these, seen some of these lift stations in work and things like that. So I had kind of a bull's eye on this for a couple of reasons, but I just want to see, and I thank you guys for the answers. I wanted to know, moving forward, I know you answered it a little bit, but moving forward, is there a way that we can see, not see this in advance? I understand that we'd have to put a temporary pump there, but to maybe upscale or upgrade the amount that we do put towards each one of these when we're setting out that estimate in the case that something like this does happen again?
Mr. Dodge?
Good evening. Tim Welch, Utilities Director. Thank you, Commissioner, for the question and, yeah, you've astutely identified something that we also identified as we got into this additional requirement. And as you can see, we did ask for some additional contingency amounts here because in the last three, we, we don't know exactly what we're going to get into under the wastewater. And the only way to do that would be to take the station down, put bypass in to do your evaluation in your design, and that would cost more in the design process. But you can put some contingencies in there and have the ability to extend those line items. You typically don't during design have a contractor available, so you don't have a way to estimate that so well. So it would be engineers estimating it and it would be an early estimate and some of those are, you know, they can change between that time and when you bid out the project and you get contractors on the job and they give you numbers. These days, the numbers change during jobs actually sometimes. We can, we can try, you know, to do this on occasion, but some of these stations are quite large and there's a lot of flow going through them, especially MLS 4. Some of the pictures, if you see them, it's a very big station and handles a lot of flow. The numbers here are actually quite reasonable for the amount we're paying for the amount of work that's being done.
Yeah, that's what I saw in that last, that we are kind of below the average of what it's costing for other places. I know that we, for question number three, answer number three, says the utility department is asking for an additional 22,000 per uncompleted station as a contingency in this request, so we're kind of giving a buffer. My question kind of goes beyond that. When we are giving a buffer and the quote comes in for a different amount, can we be notified of that lower amount? Because we're going to be approving for this larger amount, but we want to make sure that if it does come in a little bit lower, is there a way for us to know? And I guess for Mr. Dodge and any kind of contract, when something comes in below the budget that we set, is there, is there a possibility for us to be notified on that?
Yes, we can notify you, Commissioner, but once again, if we do not spend the money, it stays there in the fund.
Okay. Yeah, understood. It just, we get obviously notifications when it's above budget because we get these, these items in, but sometimes we don't get to hear that something was saved because we were able to do something else. And that kind of goes back to the communications and, and a part of what we've been talking about all night, making sure our residents know that their taxes are working for them and when we can save a little bit on something because of what our departments are able to do, I think that's something good to highlight. And if we can get a communication on that, that would be really helpful.
Not being with the City of Pembroke Pines for very long in the Utilities Department, some cities execute or process what's called a reconciliation change order at the end of jobs so that when you settle out the amounts paid, those underruns or overruns are coming through on a change order form that can be brought to the Commission and shared so that you see how we close the project out.
That's a great idea. I would really appreciate that.
That is a great idea.
What did you say that was called?
It's called a reconciliation change order.
I'd forgotten all about that, but yeah, we used to see them at the county all the time.
Can we make a motion for the manager to provide that?
Mr. Manager, would you look into the reconciliation change order process and provide us with a recommendation?
Yes, Mayor, and we also have a report ready for you on change orders. Should be ready, I believe, tomorrow.
Wonderful. Thank you so very much. Anything else?
Thank you. No, that's it for me. Thank you so much.
Okay. Anything else from anyone? Any from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Show passes unanimously. Commissioner Schwartz, you're on item 17B, sir.
Okay. Motion to approve department recommendation renewal, Elite Optimists of Central Pembroke Pines, Inc., Facility Use Agreement Renewal.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rodriguez. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, the organization was asked a series of questions. They haven't, because of work commitments on their end, they haven't been able to fulfill all of those answers. So I'm asking for a two week deferral, bring it back on the 20th so that they have everything in line.
Commissioner, City Manager, Assistant City Manager Goulding, are you aware of this matter?
Yeah.
Good afternoon. Christina Goulding, Assistant City Manager. Yes, I'm aware of the request.
And you're okay with a deferral?
I mean, there's other... I guess I can wait two weeks. I mean, there's other facility use agreements that are on the agenda.
Okay, but it's not going to end the world to wait until the next city commission meeting?
Well, I won't have the information at the next commission meeting that the commissioner's asking for.
Yeah, I'm there.
It's just...
So...
Yeah.
So, Mayor, the...
Hold on one second. Hold on one second. Is there a problem waiting two weeks on this one?
The commissioner had asked for the rosters for the, for this club, for the current rosters for this club. I won't have them until August 30th. So he had asked for a preliminary roster, and the president is working on that, but it'll still be preliminary. It won't be a final roster. I won't have that until the 30th of August.
A roster of the...
The football cheerleading program at Pasadena Park.
I thought we weren't providing names on rosters.
It's not names, it's addresses, to certify residency.
And you know that, Commissioner Schwartz, it's not names, it's addresses?
Yes, Mayor. As a matter of fact, this current agreement doesn't expire until September 30th. So the organization, as we're all aware, took over, assumed the contract from WPPO. WPPO's resident percentage has been in a decline for the last three years. I had asked administration to provide a cursory number, because they've been practicing since the beginning of July, and they've had their registration drive, just to see where they're at before we get too deep into the, into the season. So based on the WPPO trend, and not having the information from the club at tonight's meeting, I want to give the organization every opportunity to bring it forward in two weeks, which is more than enough time, considering that they're going to be, you know, starting their games the first week of September, first weekend of...
Understood, understood. So a motion has been made for a time certain deferral. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Good. Any... Nope, there's no discussion. It's time certain, but it's time certain, right? Mr. City Attorney?
Yep, two weeks.
And for the record, that date's 8:20. That's the 8:20 meeting of the commission.
Is there a discussion on a time certain motion to defer?
Is that the question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Technically not.
Let me ask you, if you could, to withdraw your second for a second.
For the purpose of discussion.
For the purpose of...
Thank you, Mayor.
Of a colleague's question. I withdraw.
Thank you. So from my understanding, we could ask them to get it to us by August 20th, to be able to include it within our agenda. However, you said preliminary list would not be available for them on their end until August 30th, and the contract ends on August 30th?
Oh, the contract ends on September 30th.
On September 30th. Okay.
But the list that that would provide now would be preliminary, because there are kids that are cut. They sometimes add kids, so that's why we have a locked-in date of August 30th.
Okay. Do we have the option to cancel if that, if we approve today a continuation? Let's say that list comes in and it's unfavorable, considering, I know that there's a percentage we need to fulfill, but we do have to kind of keep in mind that we live in a 45% Hispanic district. Football, American football is not the most popular sport, and within the Hispanic community. And I can understand, just by the cultural feeling of the city, why this program might not fulfill those requirements. Maybe it does, because we have yet to see the list, but I don't necessarily want to hold that same standard, knowing that there's cultural differences between the people who play these different sports. And I don't want to, you know, bash any Hispanics who are playing American football by any means, but I know, growing up, it's just not culturally what our communities focus on. It's more soccer, or baseball, or other things. So I feel comfortable moving it forward in the case that we do get that, and it's, you know, very low registration numbers. We can, I assume, cut at some point. That might be a question for Sam.
Yes, yes.
Because it would be a void of the contract itself at some point, if it goes below that percentage, correct?
So there, at this point, it would be, it would be pretty detrimental to the program, the kids, because of the way we line these up. All of these sports programs start at different times of the year. So we've always just had a October 1st date of the renewal, just to keep everything in line. So with this particular program, they've already, they're already two months in, they have their first game this weekend. So for us to say, come October, August 30th, let's say the numbers are not quite at 65%, then at that point, we would have to try to make a decision. We could bring this back after the season, but I would hate to pull the rug out from underneath of a bunch of kids that don't know the business that we have here, that are just there to play football.
Of course, and I wouldn't want to do the same. So I think we can evaluate towards the end of the season, but making sure that they go through the rest of their season, being able to play the sport that they like.
And we, I mean, we understand that the point of this is for our residents, but in these sports, it's important to understand that we have to bring in some of the non-residents to make it competitive, to make us have full teams. So that's why we have the thresholds we have. We work with these organizations. Sometimes they skirt that 65%. Sometimes it might go a little lower. If you look at the data that I sent, they were right there for two years. Last year, they dipped below it. And so we're hopeful that we help them promote. We give it to our charter schools. We give it to the local schools. We put signs out, because we really want to bring residents in. Sometimes it doesn't work. And it's, I mean, and this is not the only organization. There are other organizations that also skirt along those lines. In my staff, we work with them. We help them. We try to push it out to our residents, because our ultimate goal is for these programs to be successful.
And I don't think for a small percentage, if that we go under, then we kind of screw our other kids, our, the residents that are here, out of playing whatever sport they may be interested in. So I don't know how we would go about making the motion, but, or if it needs to be altered in any way, but I would agree to extend it.
Yeah. And then understanding, these are all volunteer-run organizations, so...
Of course, yeah. And we thank our parents for working on that.
Right, and these are, this particular parent, she couldn't get me the information today, because she works the nine-to-five. So by the time she got home, to create it, would have taken time, so...
I really, I did this as a courtesy to a colleague who had a pressing question. The question's been asked and answered. So is there a second to Commissioner Schwartz's motion to defer this time certain two weeks?
Mayor, before you ask for a second, I'd like to respectfully engage Commissioner Rodriguez. The sports programs in our cities, in our city, have evolved over years based on trend, based on population. Commissioner Good has a thriving football program in District One. WPPO was struggling for many years, goes back about nine years now, where they needed to move east in order to recruit. They have decided, WPPO has decided to no longer support football. The reason for my deferral is because administration's assumption of who is currently practicing or playing this weekend is unknown. Certainly, I supported the, in February, when it came up. I want them to do well. But they also have a responsibility of providing staff whatever information they do have. And then we can go from there. The, we have this particular park, if you recall, during the last strategic planning meeting we had, the vision in District Two, and the residents of District Two certainly support sports. They want to evolve into a different opportunity. And I've spoken with administration about offering other parks where this particular organization can thrive. That being said, I want to support them. I want them to do well. But they also owe us information that, quite frankly, I'm just asking for a collegial deferral for two weeks, and they will, if they are playing this weekend, certainly they have a roster. If the August 30th request for a roster was something that administration chose to do, and not the first weekend of play, we'll take that up at a different point. But we had, they had spring activity, they've had summer activity, and now they're going into the fall season. The information's available. As the District Two Commissioner over in this park, just ask for a two-week deferral, so we can get the info. Don't want to stretch that any more than what it is.
Okay. Thank you very much. The motion has been seconded for deferral by Commissioner Good. Any further discussion? There is no further discussion. None from the public. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Show passes unanimously. Show the Vice Mayor is opposed, and this passes four to one. Thank you very much. We are on item 19. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Number 19. For the record, it's the second reading of ordinances, and it reads as follows. The motion to pass proposed ordinance number 202506 on second and final reading, which is an ordinance of the city Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending chapter 155, referenced as the Land Development Code of the city Pembroke Pines, by amending section 155.401 entitled Zoning Map. To amend the city's zoning district map to rezone an approximate 40-acre parcel of land, generally located south of Pines Boulevard and west of Southwest 145th Avenue, as more particularly described in Exhibit A. Rezoning the parcel described in Exhibit A, return the parcel from the current zoning of planned commercial development, that's PCD, to mixed-use development, that's referenced as MXD, and to approve the allocation of 44 flexibility units. Approve the affordable housing residential density bonuses, and approve a restrictive covenant, as more particularly described in Exhibit B, also attached here, too. Limiting rents for 44 units to moderate level, in compliance with Broward County Policy number 2.16.33, as more particularly described in Exhibit C, made a part hereof. Providing for codification, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for an effective date. For the record, Mayor, Commissioner, item number 19 is on the floor for consideration. Second and final reading of the ordinance. Thank you, Mayor.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion is made by Commissioner Rodriguez. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor. Any discussion from the dais?
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Just a few quick points on why I will be supportive as district commissioner. Number one, thank you to Mr. Stam, our Assistant City Manager. Oftentimes, I say this, I actually mentioned it to our finance director, Lisa Chung, you all are not given enough credit. You receive a lot of the blame when you do things by the book, and I really appreciate Mr. Stam's, I'm saying it in front of your boss, by the way, your professionalism, and your staff's professionalism to always be available to answer questions. And as you know, this has been a long process, and I did have a lot of questions. I wanted to thank Mr. Goran and his team as well for answering the questions. I will be supportive, not only because of what's in front of us, but also, and I've heard all of us speak about it, but especially Commissioner Rodriguez, as mentioned, and I'm not looking past you, Commissioner Good, I just want to notify her, call her out as well. We need additional housing in our city. Adding mixed-use, which will be, yes, selfishly, I'm happy it's in District Four, but wherever it may be in the city. I agree with that. Also, I, you know, oftentimes, you hear of urban sprawl. This is not urban sprawl. It's infill on existing land, and not many people can tell me much about that property more than, I think I spend more time there than you do, Mayor. I go to the federal realty property every week, and I appreciate very much what they are doing for our community. It truly has become, at least in, close to the 75, it's kind of our town center. It's an economic generator, an employment center. I thank everyone who has emailed me, and I believe everyone on the dais, both pro and con, but I did want to say, we need more citizens, not spectators, as they say, folks that actually engage, read through agendas and reach out. Forty-four of the 308 are restricted affordable for 30 years. Peak hours, I think, are important. There's a lot of discussion on traffic. Mr. Landry lives out west with me. We have traffic. We understand that. What I see in this area, though, is a very, very good master plan that has come to fruition. It is a large corridor, a long corridor, that starts off of Pines Boulevard and extends, as a snake like this, all the way down to Pembroke Road. The peak hours for retail and work are not coinciding. That's the biggest part of my concern. I know Commissioner Good had also raised concerns about traffic in the area when we were reviewing the possibility of approving an emergency department for Baptist on the south end of this area. So I appreciate that. Most importantly, I've gotten to know federal realty over the last 15 months, when I was first appointed Commissioner and since elected. I appreciate their professionalism, their ability to communicate, and most importantly, the fact that they would own both of these, and they have an incentive to make sure that it is successful, working with our city. So I also wanted to publicly thank them. And finally, I don't think I'm breaking news, Mr. Dickerson, thank you for being here, but congratulations on becoming a dad a second time, a couple of hours ago.
Yes, congratulations.
And thank you for coming out here to answer any questions we may have. My wife would have killed me, seriously. But congratulations, sir. Thank you.
That's, that's great. Only food outside. Does anyone wish to be heard on this item, from the public? I think there were two. You want to come forward? Your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Adam Agudin, 13206 Southwest 26th Street, Millamore. Welcome. So, good evening. Really quick, here, not going to use all the time. I wrote just to not miss what I want to say. I'm here to express my support on the new development plan to be done at the shops at Pembroke Gardens. As a small business owner, and operating one of the best ice cream shops in the US, awarded by the service in almost six years, I've been seeing, over the years, how hard is to maintain our results with the amount of new malls, plazas, competition going all around us. Just a few miles southeast, we have at least three new mixed-use developments being built since 2018, and a brand-new development called Millamore Cove, that you guys probably know already. Will bring additional 400,000 square feet of commercial space, and other 2.8000 residential units, just three miles away from us. This will bring additional challenges, and will increase even more the competition. And to the Vice Mayor's comment, I think that initiative of bringing additional residential is very welcome, especially because this is bringing affordable, right, residential for that area, that we know that is not easy, right? So it's a very complicated area. The cost is super high. The houses are super expensive. So if you want to leave there, you need to pay a really good amount of money. So that's very, very good for the neighborhood. It will bring a different setup of people, setup of people. And then, just to conclude, Pembroke Pines needs to keep growing, and that corridor specifically, Southwest on 145th Street, seems to be the perfect area for this growth. Actually, it's happening for the last, at least 10, 15 years with FBI, universities, and so forth and so on. So just to reinforce my support to the mixed-use property, that will be beneficial to everybody, I guess.
Thank you very, very much for your comment. Anyone else wish to be recognized? Your name and address for the record, please.
One, it's on 1042 Southwest 143rd Avenue. Hoping that my battery life lasts, since we're time-constrained. I'd like to thank, first of all, I'd like to thank the mall developers, Tony, for making a meeting with the community happen, who have helped me on to actually do something that you guys requested. Though I was able to get information from their traffic engineer from the project, and I'll have to say that the cookies that they had were amazing, so points on that. So points on that. Some questions that were left after the meeting, specifically with the traffic engineer, the mitigation of the traffic study is not, we don't know if it includes or doesn't include the previous approved development that is south of the project. So we don't know that information. And then, the only option that they offer to help mitigate the traffic that this will create will be tweaking the traffic light timings on the major intersections. No other future feasible resolutions on that area are available. Need clarity if that the light tweaking will mitigate both projects or just one? As I understood, as the traffic engineer said, that traffic wait time at the lights will be the same as what they are right now. To me, that's really hard to comprehend since there's going to be more traffic. I'm waiting for that answer via email from the traffic engineer. And then, one thing that I would like to express from the community, the community in the area feels that their voices are not being heard by the city, especially even after, without a positive endorsement from the City Committee for the zoning change requests. We're finding that the project is already scheduled for an August fourteen meeting, even before this meeting is over. And the last comment regarding issues around the area with the Grand Palms billion-dollar project that is near there. Mayor Castillo made a comment in the post, in social post, saying that regarding similar concerns that we have on that area, that his response was that the landowner is entitled to do that project. And since the property is known for that use, the city role most likely just will involve issuing permits. Coming back to this project, the zoning required for the proposed development is not a sign for the project. The city is willing to change the zoning and affect the lifestyle and safety of our community. With this project, the city is creating a precedent for more congestion on that corridor and is all looking for the best interest of their district for residents, especially in that area. Vice Mayor, you might visit that area often, but you don't live on that area to understand all the issues that we have on a daily basis.
Well, I'll tell you, I've been up here fifteen months and I'm in Century Village almost every single day. And I speak to federal realty almost every week. The first time I met you was here tonight. I have not heard from your community. And trust me, this is Pembroke Pines. They call you, they text you, they email you. I have HOA meetings. I haven't been invited by your HOA. You're in my district. So I may not live there, but I'm there almost every single day. My in-laws live across the street. So I am with them every single week. So that's one, not a fair statement. Completely unfair. Second, your issues were directly addressed by administration. I'm a policymaker. I vote on what is presented before us. This is what's presented for us. You're referring to a completely different development, which has not come before the city of Pembroke Pines. So to say that you're mixing apples and oranges is putting it lightly. Grand Palms has absolutely nothing to do with their property. Zero. But you mentioned it. You did. And you mentioned the mayor.
Yes.
You cannot compare a project that has not come, I don't care what the news has reported, it has not come before Mr. Mike Stam and his department. Also, there are pre-existing legal issues with every property, like this one and like every other. So when you come before the commission and make those kinds of statements, my recommendation is, sir, you do your homework before.
Perfect. Any red flags that you see of this project?
My vote is, you're going to hear my vote. And I have been working with those folks for more than a year to make sure that the original proposals, actually, the original proposals were for almost nine hundred units.
I'm aware.
And what's before you is three hundred and eight. Why? Because to the mayor's earlier point, we have a code. We have rules for the way that we build in this city, very different from other cities. So yes, if there's one thing you could ask the manager or the assistant managers or the attorneys, there was no absence. It was a continuous process with all of them and with anybody who contacted me, anyone, including Century Village, who has thirteen thousand residents and is your neighbor, and asked me about the project. And I met with their executive board and presented them with information that Mr. Stam and Mr. Dickerson provided me.
I would also, I would also add the following. Sometimes, you know, land use is complicated. It's complicated because you're not just dealing with a bunch of rules, you're dealing with the lifestyle and the impacts that it has on people like you who live, who live around that area. But even when votes don't go your way, I tell residents all the time, your voice was not ignored. We're listening to what you're saying.
And I didn't say highly, perfectly, directly. It was what I heard from the community.
No, no, but I'm offering, I'm offering, I'm offering this to you. My understanding is...
I wouldn't, sorry, I wouldn't be here if I didn't think that you guys were hearing, were not hearing.
Claro. What I'm saying to you is, what I'm saying to you is, there was a, there was a meeting, I understand that we demanded that you get because you asked for it.
Correct.
Not a lot of people showed up.
I'd like to know how many attended that meeting?
I did.
And how many attended?
Myself.
Anybody else?
And whoever was for the developer.
How many residents live in your community, sir?
Myself.
There's probably a few hundred that live there. So...
Right. And then, for the sake of the argument, the feedback that I got from the community was that this is already posted on the next meeting. So it's going to get approved regardless.
The reason it's posted on a secondary meeting is because we have to do for this kind of project a first reading and a second reading?
No, I'm talking about the August fourteen side plan.
All right, look, here's what I want to tell you. Your voice matters. We're not ignoring you. What we're doing is, we're weighing the benefits against the burdens. And we have to make a determination. But that doesn't mean that in upcoming steps, our Assistant City Manager, who's a planner, but who's a community operator in his core, is listening to what you're saying about traffic and about those impacts. It doesn't get missed. It gets thrown into the mix. And so I don't want you to feel like, you know, even if you don't hear the vote that you were looking for, that we're ignoring what you're saying. We're not ignoring what you're saying. We simply have an issue, a balancing task to perform. So I hope that explains it to you a little bit. And I want to thank you.
You are explaining it to me. That's perfectly fine. Appreciate, appreciate that comment as well.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for your caring and for coming forward. I appreciate it.
And then, last thing that I want to say is, there's nothing against the developer on this. I mean, they're trying their best to do something beneficial on their end.
Much appreciated.
And they're going through the city process. I still have my concerns as a citizen.
We appreciate your coming forward and we thank you for that. Okay, I think we're all in?
No, I didn't get to make some comments on this one. And I'm going to keep them to the flex units because I know we are doing the zoning on the next item. I think it's really important to highlight to our residents what these flex units mean. This means market rate affordable housing.
Yeah.
We would not be able to give them the density that they want or are asking for if they did not provide this option for us. This also comes along with what the county had passed under the Geller Amendment. It's an incentive for developers to consider affordable housing within their own development because it very easily could have gone and been just a little bit lower and not had any affordable housing units. And I think it's really important for us to consider that this is a crucial part of the project. And forty-four sounds like a small number because it is. But it means that any future developments, we really have to push for these kinds of flex units in order for us to build a city that is affordable for all. There will be market rate because there are some people that can afford market rate. But thankfully, there's these options for affordable housing because affordable housing is what we should all be striving for. And I really appreciate the developer putting this in and for our staff working on this project because I know we're pushing for as much affordable housing as possible. And we need to continue to push that in all future projects because this is how we're going to be able to keep our kids who grew up here, like myself, in the city because it is extremely unaffordable. And if we're not considering these aspects and these flex units within the development and pushing our developers to do better, we're never going to get there. And I'm going to have to purchase a home in Timbuktu because can't purchase it here.
We want to keep you around. And I had, and I had received the verbal agreement. You know, the city keeps waiting lists of people from our own city who are looking for this kind of housing. And we would like you to house our own residents. And I had had that discussion and there's no objection to this, correct? I mean, if we don't give you a name, rent to whoever you want. But trust me, that's not going to happen. We will have people who qualify and who are good people and we can send them, and you will be accepting them into those units, correct? Correct? Can you make that on the record?
Mr. Mayor, can you ask the gentleman's name so the record can reflect the answer?
Yes.
Or through his counsel, who can confidently respond properly? I trust.
My question was, we keep a list of people who are looking for affordable housing and we use that list in a variety of ways, not just with our housing, but also with private sector housing. I want to know that when we, when you have a vacancy, you're going to call us and on a priority basis accept people from the list in Pembroke Pines.
Dwayne Dickerson, on behalf of the applicant, attorney with Misko Backman, offices at fourteen Southeast Fourth Street in Boca Raton. We absolutely look forward to working with the city of Pembroke Pines. The property is in Pembroke Pines. There's, we have a declaration of affordable requirements.
Right.
And we, so is, you know, if you provide applicants that qualify and meet the criteria, it makes perfect sense for us to work with our home city.
Of course.
So...
It's helpful for you.
You know, obviously, I don't want to do anything to violate any fair housing or any, you know, fair opportunities. But it makes very good sense for us to work with our home city.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll on second. I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry. Please come forward. Will you be the last speaker? Is anyone else needing to speak on this? Thank you. You'll be the last speaker. Your name and your address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Marcelo Montalbago, five, one, eighty-five, Lakeside Drive.
Okay.
I, okay. I'm here to say something that the Vice Mayor said that we, this beautiful city, Pembroke Pine City, is a beautiful city. I've been in business here eighty years plus, you know? And I have a business in Pembroke, shop of Pembroke Gardens, you know, where, where there is a concern for me to build three hundred-plus apartments in the, one of the parking lot of the shopping center. The shopping center is a retailer. It's not a residential. It was built for retailer. It's a beautiful, beautiful shopping center. I love it. You know, I love the people. I've been there for eighteen years. You know, I've been hiring and employing more than a thousand employees of the city, you know, that residents of the city, you know? And my concern is because, it's very because we got three ingress and three ingress. That's it in the whole shopping. And today, you go to the shopping center, I was there, I say six thirty, six thirty PM today, at eighty percent, I would say seventy-five percent of the parking space, they were taken, okay? There is no enough, there's no parking. And they trying to build, you know, a lot of apartments where we gonna, they gonna build to replace the whole parking where I depend to survive, you know? Only seventy-two parking in that area. Even my employee will, won't be able to park over there, you know? But saying that, you know, even that we depend of the lunch crowd, dinner crowd, peak hours, weekends, holidays, Christmas, et cetera, you know? And not only me, the whole area of the southeast of the shopping center depend of that parking lot. You can see it every day, every day, you know? If you were me, you know, that I've been here for eighteen years and I love what I do. This is a family-owned business that we live from this, you know? And, and, you know, it's very hard to see how we'll destroy a beautiful shopping center and convert it into residential. The city need it, everybody need it, you know? I know against that. But what I gain, again, is that what they gonna do is... Okay, let me see if I can give a better idea while trying to share, to say, you know? That the addition of the accessory parking combined with the increase of the construction, can you imagine getting into the shopping center, cement trucks, construction trucks? You name it, during the day in one entrance? That you gonna be in the middle, in the main way, in the main entrance of the shopping center? It's gonna be impossible to grab...
Mr. Stam, could you come forward and talk to us about the parking at this? What does your parking analysis tell you about the number of spaces and the displacement of parking to the structure?
Mike Stam is Assistant City Manager, Director of Planning and Economic Development. Mayor, one of the biggest challenges that we have in our city is that we, as consumers, love convenient parking. When we look at parking for shopping centers and we do our analysis, we look at the plaza as a whole, not necessarily just convenient parking. Mayor, you were looking at the dais tonight. You were the only one on the dais when we opened up Pembroke Gardens.
Yeah.
And when we opened up Pembroke Gardens, sorry, except for the manager and Sam, but when we opened up Pembroke Gardens, the first complaint that we received was no parking. Yet there was almost eighteen hundred parking spots there. The problem is their perception of parking. In front of the gentleman's store, there's two rows of parking up Fifth Street. Actually, four total rows. There's parking behind each one of the places. Can I tell you, when we wanted to build this property, we wanted to build it as mixed-use back in the day. And when we looked at our parking analysis, we realized that there is ample parking inside the property. Now, don't get me wrong, they're going to build a parking garage and there's going to be flex spaces directly behind where the gentleman's talking about. But as a whole, Pembroke Gardens has sufficient parking. If you go look at parking at any point in the day, parking at any point in the day, they've done the analysis, PM peak, AM peak, um we're in good shape overall.
So what you're saying is that there's enough parking, but it's not necessarily in front of his store where he wants it. I'm gonna tell you something. So many years ago, I I, you know, when I was in school, I I had jobs that were in malls. And I don't know how it works now. I don't want to get into anyone's pots and pans, but uh I had a job, i- it was at Sears. And Sears said, you will not park here, you will park over there, you will walk to your car. And that's where the employees parked. So I go to Pembroke Gardens every week. My wife loves it there. And of course, I I go with her because that's the way it works. And and so she likes the parking spot in front of the store, just like everybody else. But I see I see an employee come out and get something out of their car. They were they were wearing a shirt and and go back in. And I was thinking to myself, when I was a kid, I would never have been allowed to park uh in front of uh if if one of my managers had said that, they would have given me a swift kick and they would have said, how many times did we tell you, you have to park over there? That's where the employees park so that the customer gets the good spot, not you, see, because we pay you, they pay us. So I don't know if that works at Pembroke Garden. I don't know if they have those rules at Pembroke Garden, but the man is saying that the that that the parking is there. Maybe what has to happen is we have to take non-essential, non-customer parking and put them where the customers don't want to park and let them walk to their car so that the customers have a better spot. Now, I don't know how that get, I don't know how that happens within a shopping center with, how many stores you got there?
Fifty-five?
No. Seventy-five stores, but maybe you can get them all together and agree. This is where the employees park.
Mayor, if I may, when we did the analysis, you know, they have two valet stations or three valet stations, so we have valet parking inside the plaza. Um we have, but again, we have valet parking inside the plaza. We understand the circumstance that comes along with all of this stuff. Um but when you're looking at it, you're looking at the total parking. I would love to park every individual store, but we have to look at aggregates when we're building a shopping center.
All right, so your bottom line is we have sufficient park.
Absolutely. And, Mayor, there's one other point that needs to be made. The gentleman's talking about the three points of ingress and egress. As part of this application, there's an additional point of ingress and egress that's being added to this property off of one hundred and forty-fifth. So we'll have now four points as well as one shared point with the Duke Office Building to the south. So there will be five points of ingress and egress in the property when we're all set.
Okay, all right, all right. Thank you very much. Thank you both. And I appreciate it. The clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes, by your vote, this item is approved.
For the record, Mayor and Commissioner, the permanent number is two zero four seven, item number nineteen. Next up is number twenty, Mayor.
Go right ahead.
Thank you for my read. Number twenty is a motion to pass proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero seven on second and final reading with a public hearing as required by law. Proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-five oh seven zero seven is an ordinance to the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, creating the Pembroke Gardens mixed use development as MXD District Design Guidelines. The approximate forty-acre parcel of land generally located south of Pines Boulevard and west of southwest one forty-fifth Avenue is more particularly described in Exhibits A and B attached here too and incorporated herein, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. Mayor and Commissioner, number twenty on the floor for consideration with a public hearing. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by the vice mayor. It's your second. Second made by Commissioner Rodriguez. I remind the commission that uh it's ten o'clock and we have an executive session at the completion of the uh of the meeting. Any discussion on item twenty?
I, sorry.
Yes.
Um, I just want to kind of comment a little bit in in response to what they what our residents have mentioned. And I said it last time, I think sometimes we mistakenly think of mixed use as as just a little bit too much in one space. It's important for us to remember that mixed use, for one, on on the traffic end, does mean that it is easier for these normal uh day-to-day activities that we do outside of our homes to now be within walking distance. So let's say you are going to a great Foot Ruckers restaurant for a ten-dollar burger. You can walk there instead of take your car. So it for in regards to your comments, it means that you now have at least, if one person per bedroom, three hundred and eight new uh new customers that you can appeal to, three hundred and eight or double that because most people live with somebody else or families, things like that, that are gonna go past Foot Ruckers every day, either during their lunchtime or their dinnertime. Those are constant customers that you're gonna have in your facility. That is one very positive aspect of a mixed use space and and to to zone in mixed use means that you're making everything a little bit closer, which the number one impact of a mixed use space and zoning is profitability for those businesses residing within the mixed use zone. One of the reasons for that is now you're not driving around. Imagine you have a plaza on 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 one side, you have a big giant road, you don't really have anybody that's walking through, you just have cars driving past at miles and miles per hour and no one's gonna stop at your restaurant if you're in a plaza like that unless they've indicated that that's exactly where they're gonna go, because usually we choose our restaurants and we put in the GPS. We're not just zooming by restaurants and say, hey, that looks like a great place. That does happen, however, when people are walking by your restaurants. If they're walking in and out to go to any other kind of the any other place in the shopping center because they're simply there, or they're walking, you know, a midday walk and to get off of their computers, whatever that may be, then they're walking by your your business as well. Walkability and this and the aspect of mixed use usually bumps up what revenues our small businesses have, especially those smaller family-owned businesses, because you're getting free advertisement from the people walking in that space. And that's one of the things that when we see how mixed use is is used or why people advocate for it, is because it does very much help with the economic development of our city as well as what our our small businesses are dealing with. You, it it is gonna be, and maybe I'm wrong, but my hope is that this actually does boost your business because you're gonna have a lot more people in the area that are easily accessible to um to Foot Ruckers and any of the other facilities in the area. And those are the ends of my comments.
I know they like ice cream. Anything further? Anything from the public? Clerk will call the roll.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes. And by your vote, that passes unanimously.
For the record, Mayor and Commissioner, permanent number is two zero four eight for this particular item. Number twenty is two zero four eight.
Yes, sir. Thank you so very much.
Twenty-one.
First reading ordinances.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. On item number twenty-one, it's a motion to pass proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero nine on first reading. Proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-five zero nine is an ordinance to the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending ordinance number eleven seventy-four to amend the definition of quote tax collector, end of quote, providing for conflict, separability, and providing for an effective date. Item twenty-one on the floor for consideration.
So moved.
Twenty-one.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Good, second by the vice mayor. Any discussion on item twenty-one? Any from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you very much.
For the record, Mayor and Commissioner, this item will be heard on second and final hearing on August the twentieth in these very chambers, August the twentieth. Next up, twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Twenty-two is a motion to pass proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-five zero dash eleven on first reading. It's a proposed ordinance of the of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, on ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash eleven, authorizing the issuance of bond indebtedness to refund all or a portion of the city's outstanding seventy-six million forty-five thousand general obligation bonds, Series twenty fifteen, providing certain other matters in connection therewith, providing for conflict, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. This is on the floor for consideration. Number twenty-two, your bond counsel for the record, Jolinda Herring, is present, online, and available, and the Ford family is here in the audience for questions as our financial advisor. Twenty-two on the floor, Mayor.
I motion to approve it.
Motion made by the vice mayor. It's your second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Good. Any discussion?
Just one point. Um I know this is first reading and we're coming back for second reading. Um this is another example, Mr. Dodge, of good fiscal leadership and stewardship. I really would hope that if this is approved on second reading, that we get the information out to our residents that we are saving, I took my glasses off, but three point five million or four hundred thousand dollars per year on annual cash flow basis. I got that right, Mr. Lewis, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So at the appropriate time, if it is approved, I really would appreciate communication on that to our residents.
Without without a doubt, I seem to recall communications some months ago where it was said that more than likely, uh in September, I think it was said, that uh we would be refinancing to save some money and here we are in August and we're already doing it. So uh I'm very, very thankful for money saved uh without extending the uh the term. And uh uh all that is is uh is money earned. So thank you very, very much. Any further discussion on item twenty-two? Any from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Show passes unanimously.
And for the record, Mayor and Commissioner, this item will be heard in second and final public hearing on August the twentieth in these very chambers.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Item twenty-three, UASI.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Number twenty-three is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty twenty-five R dash twenty-two, which is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving a grant from the urban area security initiative, better known as UASI, the grant program for twenty fiscal year twenty twenty-four through the state of Florida Division of Emergency Management for the benefit of the Fort Lauderdale dash Miami UASI, it's better known as UASI comprised of various county and municipal entities, including the city of Pembroke Pines, authorizing the execution of a memorandum of agreement between the city of Miami as the sponsoring agency and the city of Pembroke Pines as a participating agency, which provides for the use of the city of Pembroke Pines' share of the grant proceeds, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. Item number twenty-three on the floor is a resolution twenty twenty-five R dash twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
Motion is made by the vice mayor, second by Commissioner Good. Any discussion on UASI? Any from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Show passes unanimously.
For the record, Mayor and Commissioner, that would be uh resolution number twenty two zero four-nine, two zero four-nine. Next up is twenty-four.
You betcha. Let's go.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Number twenty-four is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty twenty-five R thirty-one, which is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving a plat note amendment that references the delegation request to the shops of Pembroke Gardens plat for the approximate forty-acre property generally located on the south side of Pines Boulevard between I seventy-five and southwest one forty-fifth Avenue, authorizing the city manager or the city manager designated to take any action necessary to implement the intent of the resolution, providing for conflicts, separability, and finally providing for an effective date. Item twenty-four on the floor for consideration.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by the vice mayor. It's your second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rodriguez. Any discussion on the plat? Any from the public? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Show passes unanimously.
For the record, Mayor and Commissioner, permanent number for the record, two zero five zero, twenty fifty. Next up, twenty-five.
Number twenty-five.
Excuse me? I'm sorry. Yes, the resolution number. Correct. That's Resolution twenty twenty fifty. Next up, twenty-five. Mayor, if I may, motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty twenty-five R thirty-two, which is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving the first amended agreement with Ford and Associates, INC., for municipal advisory services, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement, providing for conflicts, separability, and providing for an effective date. Twenty-five on the floor for consideration.
Any? Is there a motion?
I move it.
Moved by the vice mayor. It's your second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rodriguez. Any discussion? Any from the public? Jerry, doing a great job.
Save us money.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Show passes unanimously.
For the record, Mayor, the resolution is adopted. It's number twenty fifty-one, two zero five one.
Number twenty-six.
Twenty-six, Mayor and Commissioner. For the record, it's a motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty twenty-five R thirty-three, which is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving and authorizing the execution of the agreement for uniform collection of non-adverborum special assessments with the Broward County tax collector, tax collector, directing the city clerk to transmit a copy of the resolution and the executed agreement for uniform collection of non-adverborum special assessments to the Broward County tax collector and providing for conflicts, separability, and providing for an effective date.
Moved by Commissioner Good, second by the vice mayor. Any discussion? Seeing seeing none, any from the public? None. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Show passes unanimously.
For the record, Mayor and Commissioner, permanent number is twenty fifty-two, two zero five two.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Twenty-seven is a motion to approve proposed resolution number twenty twenty-five R thirty-five, which is a resolution of the city commission relating to Platts in chapter twenty twenty-five dash one sixty-four of the laws of Florida. That's Senate Bill number seven eighty-four, designating the administrative authority and administrative official for receipt, review, and approval of plat and replat applications, directing that the city can form its receipt, review, and approval processes for plat and replat applications to the requirements of new chapter twenty twenty-five dash one sixty-four of the laws of Florida, and to the extent necessary declaring a zoning in progress, that the city's land development regulations be interpreted and applied in a manner consistent with the requirements of chapter twenty-five dash one sixty-four laws of Florida, and that the in the event of a conflict, chapter twenty twenty-five one sixty-four shall apply, providing for conflicts, separability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve reluctantly.
Moved by the vice mayor. It's your second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rodriguez. Discussion?
One point, uh, Mayor.
Yeah.
I I had uh Mr. Goran uh go through this with me. I was wondering why it is that the legislature once again, once again passed a law that basically takes authorities away from a city.
I'm sorry.
It's just a repetitive process every few years. So I'm expressing my frustration by saying I reluctantly motioned to approve it because it is state law as of July one, but it's another example of not respecting home rule and taking authorities away from cities.
I too will hold my nose and vote yes.
I'll echo those comments. I will. It's yet another preemption from the state of making sure that we don't have as much power. And like I said earlier, we're the ones closest to the community. We're the ones in the community. Tallahassee is not as much and neither is the governor participating in parts of Pembroke Pines to know what is or should not be here. So reluctantly, yes.
It's it's silly, but okay. Uh any further discussion? Seeing any from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Passed unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Uh, the the manager has 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 admitted the the errors of my ways. I've given you the wrong numbers this evening. You'll forgive me. The clerk will have to confirm that. I've given you ordinance numbers and that was on my list. I apologize. The clerk and I will work towards correcting the record. I inadvertently applied the wrong numbers across the board. They will be changed appropriately and will not have any legal effect on the end result of your erudite motions. Thank you.
Not a problem. Without objection. No objection made. Thank you. Uh, item addendum one was passed. Are there any other addendum items? Um, I think there was another addendum, correct?
No, Mayor.
Silverado?
Just one.
Just one, Mayor.
Silverado?
Just one.
I see a uh.
That was just an updated exhibit.
Oh, that's just an updated exhibit?
I think the Silverado one's updated.
All right. So so we're done with addendum items? Okay. Regular agenda.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, item twenty-eight for the record. I will give you no numbers, I promise, this evening, any further. Uh, this is item number twenty-five dash one seven nine. It's discussion of possible action to approve a cosponsorship and funding for a table of ten at the YMCA Beach Ball Gala on October fourth, twenty twenty-five in the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars. This event is currently not a budgeted sponsorship. After polling, the city commission regarding support for the sponsorship unanimous approval was not obtained, and as such, the matter is being formally brought before the commission for discussion and possible action. And for the record, the discussion, which in fact included some conversation with commission members, was not a vote, was not a roll call, it was not public action, was simply conversation. And for the purposes of Mr. Dodge's interpretation of that, the item's on the agenda for appropriate public consumption.
These uh these events fall within the city manager's spending authority. However, we agreed that the city manager, unless a commissioner objected, would um uh handle it administratively. And if any commissioner objected to the item, it would come back before us. Who objected to the item that this is before us?
It was Commissioner Schwartz.
Commissioner Schwartz, what's your objection to attending the YMCA Beach Ball Gala?
Attending or funding?
Both.
Well, I think the um, uh, I believe the five thousand dollar request, uh, given the amount of support that we give the YMCA throughout the year, um, I was surprised that we hadn't been doing it before. I'm not sure if a thousand dollars, a couple, is something that we want to do. Um, there's certainly going to be Form Nines that will have to be completed. Um, we've had other uh recent events where the city has purchased tables and uh the seats have been vacant. And I think taxpayers need to make sure that the dollars are being spent wisely, in an appropriate way. Uh, for years, I'm sure you would agree, they'd rather have the money than the chicken dinner. So I'd like to be able to support the YMCA. I don't know if this is the best way to do it with tax with tax funds.
So so th- this event came to our attention because the YMCA selected our fire chief for recognition, uh, along with several other fire chiefs, but not every fire chief was selected, based on our city's and the fire fire department's performance in saving lives by teaching kids to swim. And the funds that the YMCA collects from this event will go to their swimming program. Chief, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this is how YMCA has chosen to raise money, Commissioner Schwartz. Uh, as as you well know, uh, I attend the I attend these things. I may maybe a lot of elected officials sort of see it the same way. Uh, this has worked for me. I would rather, I would much rather write them a check. But if we're gonna do that with the YMCA, then we should do that with all of them, not just pick and choose which ones we're gonna go to. This commissioner.
And and that was and that was another and that was another reason for my objection because. And that was another reason for my objection, because I'm thinking about some of the smaller nonprofits that we've supported in the past, and, you know, congratulations to the fire chief. Maybe he should come out of the fire budget, and his staff should be there. I don't know if it's appropriate for us to be there and take seats away from those who were actually doing the program.
Okay, so do you have a motion? So, do you have a motion to make?
I don't have a motion to make. I'm trying to find a solution where we can support the YMCA without, you know, without spending $1,000 for an elected official couples night out. I'd rather have staff go, the fire chief and who he deems appropriate. I mean, think about, think about everyone who's been involved at the water events, they should be the ones at the table, not us. They're the ones who put the work in.
Sorry, I'd like to make a comment to push back on it being $1,000 for a date night out for elected officials. It is, on paper, yes, $5,000 donation, and you get about 10 seats, but we are given an amount for the dinner itself, which we all know we have to disclose, so it's, I don't think it's appropriate to say that it's, you know, $1,000 for a ticket to a fancy dinner. It's a donation in which we get a ticket, and each ticket has an individual price. If that price is above a certain limit, we do have to disclose that, but it's also a chance for us to recognize, and I believe it's not just the fire chief, but it's also the mayor's, that are going to be honored. So, going to these events, as mentioned, it is work, it's silly to call it a date night, I would much rather go on a date night to anywhere else.
Yeah.
But, just to clarify, this isn't something that we pay $1,000 per seat, it's, we give the $5,000 donation, and we get a couple of seats. The rest of that money does go into the programming that the YMCA has, and with two YMCA facilities in the city that provide a lot of assistance to our families, while I'll say their gym's a little pricey on the west side, they do have programs for families who can't afford those facilities to be able to attend, and they have a lot of great programming that host our, even our littlest of residents, so I would be happy to support this item.
Do you have a motion to make?
Are you going to motion, or do I do it? Commissioner? I motion to approve.
There's a motion made to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Commissioner Rodriguez. Any further discussion?
Just that I'm proud to have the YMCA in my district, and I'm proud that Chief Rodriguez is our fire chief in our city. Congratulations.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
With one no. I have an additional motion to make. I'm going to pass the gavel to the Vice Mayor, so I can make the motion. I move that we change the policy from any one commissioner to any two commissioners in the future, objecting to the purchase of these sponsorship opportunities.
Where it would require...
So, instead of just one, now it would require two.
To be moved from the administrative to the dais.
Correct.
Okay, I second it.
There's a second.
I think...
Vice Mayor.
Any discussion?
So, I would push back on that, while I understand why you would make that motion, I think, because, one, we're not allowed to talk to one another. If somebody does have some information regarding one of these sponsorships, the only way to bring that information is through, is on the dais.
Right.
But if only, but if we required two people, so then the other people might not be aware of what that...
Well, the manager would, because you'd tell him.
Okay. But...
Otherwise, I fear...
Am I right in saying, Commissioner, and correct me if I'm wrong here, let's say you object?
Because I have some knowledge that...
Because you have some knowledge.
I can't let you guys know about...
No, but you can tell the manager.
I guess the question is, can the manager disclose?
The manager has to decide whether we're going or not.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Go ahead.
Members of the Commission, forgive me for interrupting. I would not want for a moment inadvertently to allow you to step into the quandary of a sunshine violation unintentionally.
Right.
That's never the intention, that was not the intention. In fact, the earlier conversation, Mr. Dodge was delicate enough to get a sense for where the thing was traveling, did not poll any one of you, and did not take a vote count during, and let the record reflect that. The challenge is, is that you put a unique, I choose not to use the word burden, but you certainly challenged the manager to figure out a way to get to the answer without polling you. So, if it be wished to have two or more, two members of the Commission to have some thought process, the manager will have to go into a very serious tea-leaf-reading opportunity to kind of get a sense for which way you want to go.
Except, except, one can have conversations with five people without taking a poll and still make an independent decision.
And that was my understanding.
Each, the way we created this policy was, that the manager would decide this in consultation.
Up to the number.
For all I know, he could get five yeses and still say hell no.
Correct, and that's legally possible. That's right.
And so, I don't think, I don't think that this runs afoul of that. If any commissioner has a particular concern, they should bring it to the manager, but we did this policy in order to relieve ourselves of this burden, but if what we're going to do now is adopt policies that every item is going to be here, then it's self-defeating, and that's why I made the motion.
And your motion is for two?
It takes two. And then...
Mayor, I...
Hold on a second, I'm speaking. And then, and then, and then the manager can make whatever decision he wants. He may listen to what he's told, he may say no to every one of them, and nothing keeps, and nothing keeps a commissioner from bringing an item of their own if they wish. But, you know, we made a policy, the five of us made a policy, and now, now it seems like the policy is starting to fall. I just don't have time for that. So, that's my motion. My motion is, it should be two.
So, a motion was made by the mayor, seconded by Commissioner Good. There was public comment. Commissioner Schwartz, did you say something that you wanted to chime in?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We also agreed that we were going to have a nonprofit window for those to apply for funding in the budget process, and once that window closed, it was closed for that year. We've yet to see from administration what that form looks like, how we're going to go about doing it, so...
I don't believe there was consensus on it. That's not how I remember it. I know that was discussed, but I remember mentioning then, and I'll say it again now, there's plenty of organizations that might not plan events that far out, so to have a window and restrict who we can help out, because they don't fill out a form at the beginning of the year, doesn't seem like something that's useful, and I don't remember that being the consensus at all.
Okay, so, we have a motion on the floor that's been seconded, Commissioner Good.
I just, thank you, Vice Mayor, I just have a quick question for the attorney. You know, Commissioner Rodriguez, you know, brought a good point up in regards to if a individual commissioner had knowledge of something that should be disclosed amongst all of us. What would prevent that one commissioner from writing that concern to the city manager, and then the city manager would be able then to distribute it to the Commission, not allowing for, you know, it's just a one-way communication?
May I try to respond? So, you're speaking in terms of sending some letter of concern, letter of objection, perhaps?
Yeah, for instance, you know, this goes out, hey, this group here wants to have a, you know, or, you know, this situation here, do you want to buy a table? And let's say I have specific knowledge that I think is relevant for the Commission to know.
If I may?
And then, I just want to go ahead and send that to the city manager and allow the city manager to make that disclosure.
As you, if I may quickly, the reply to all button is evil. Be very concerned about that in public life, and that is, if you begin to have conversations online, that's not your objective.
That's not what I asked.
I understand that.
I asked just a simple disclosure to the city manager, and that's it.
The answer is yes, so long as you...
And then the city manager can submit that information.
You monitor the concern that I just raised.
Right. Okay.
Vice Mayor, man?
Go ahead.
It's a practical matter, if anyone writes anything to the city manager, it's public record.
Correct, so long as it's not publicized and a vote's beginning to be taken on record.
Okay, well, there was a motion on the floor by the mayor, there's a second by Commissioner Good, and we call the roll.
You can call the roll.
Well, I don't call the roll, the clerk will.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So, it passed three to two?
Yes.
And I'm giving you the gavel back.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate your indulgence on that. Okay, so, the YMCA Beach Ball Gala is resolved. Okay, number 27, number 25?
No, no.
Number 29?
29.
Mayor, you also have some reports involved, and one of the reports is mine, and I'd like to address, and I'm happy to address 29 very quickly with your permission, if you'd like, but you give reports of the League and MPO, et cetera, first.
Hold on one second.
Thank you, Mayor.
Reports of the League, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anything, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Nothing from my end. I believe they do not have an August meeting for the executive team, and it's going to start in September. I did receive from Shelley a list of tentative dates, and I will have Julie send that out to everybody that would be interested in attending. I will be at most of them, and I will make sure to let you all know if I can, so the second person can attend. They are having their League of Cities Conference in a couple weeks.
Next week, right?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday, Thursday, Friday through the weekend.
You're going up?
I'm going for two days, got to come back for the park opening.
I will not be going.
Dream Park.
For a Dream Park opening, and...
Go ahead, sorry.
We will come back with a report as to what we learned in the conference.
I am also planning on traveling up Thursday.
I will not be going, but okay, thank you, and we'll be well-represented there. Anything else on the League? Anything on the MPO?
No meeting yet.
Thank you very much. Reports of the city manager?
No items, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Reports of the city attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, if I can. Item 29, I'll go with first with your permission.
Yes.
This is, this is an item which I bring to your attention periodically. The city has a currently pending bond transaction, which was approved on first reading this evening. The Holland and Knight Law Firm serves as what's called disclosure counsel to the city in its bond transactions. That's not bond counsel, it's a separate designation for certain professionals who assist with the underwriting of the bond transaction. The law firm also does other work in the City of Pembroke Pines from time to time, which has absolutely ethically nothing to do with a bond transaction. However, other colleagues of mine that are city attorneys believe that they have the independent ability to waive a conflict, which I believe I do not have, and traditionally, for all the years I've been sitting here, any time there's been a request for a waiver, I've asked the Commission that they, who control and own the waiver, to in fact by motion approve a waiver unless there's a reason not to. In this situation, we recommend that the Commission allow that to occur. We have no issue with having Holland and Knight serve as the disclosure counsel in the upcoming potential bond transaction, and also to continue their additional work, whether it be foreclosure work or other matters. They don't sue the city either, by the way, just for the record, but to the extent they may have other matters pending, I would ask that you consider that and make the appropriate motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the city manager's advice?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rodriguez, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Show passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor Commission, and one more thing if I can with the, Mayor Commission, as you probably know, even our newest Commissions know this, that under the state law, under Chapter 286, which is a sunshine law, if I, as your city attorney, in our office needs some advice and direction and guidance with regard to discussing pending litigation in which the entity is presently a party before a court or administrative agency, provided that certain conditions are met, I need your advice. We currently are in litigation with the City of Hollywood, as you well know. There are several appeals currently pending, which have been temporarily abated by the fourth district at the request of both parties. I am this evening formally and on the record, as required by law, asking for a shade meeting to occur either potentially on August the 20th, or potentially September 3rd, or sometime during the month of September. While you ask, well, the answer is that we're having some discussions with council, and I need some advice on litigation strategy, and that would be something that the statute does contemplate. If this evening you would approve this request that I'm making formally by law of the City Commission to in fact provide a shade meeting, we will set the date when we know exactly when the date can be set.